Good morning and welcome to the Landmarks Preservation Commission's Public Hearing and Public Meeting of November nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. We'll begin this morning by taking attendance, and I'll ask our General Counsel Mark Silbermann to call the roll.
Chair Carroll.
Here.
Vice Chair Bland. Commissioner Chapin.
Here.
Commissioner Chen.
Here.
Commissioner Chu.
Here.
Commissioner Ginsburg.
Here.
Commissioner Goldblum. Commissioner Jefferson.
Here.
Commissioner Lutfi.
Here.
Commissioner Master.
Here.
All right. Good morning and welcome again to our public hearing and public meeting of November nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. This meeting is being held in our hearing room on the ninth floor of One Center Street. It is also being held via Zoom. And for anyone who would like to just watch the proceedings, you can do so at our YouTube channel where it's being livestreamed. Today, we have a public meeting item for an app, which is an application that has already had a public hearing and for which we've already heard testimony, and they're back today in response to our comments at that public hearing. And then we're moving on to our public hearing agenda to review new applications for work on designated properties. And with that, I will turn it over to Corey Harala, our Director of Preservation.
Thank you, Sarah, and good morning, everyone. We'll start today's Preservation Department Agenda with public meeting item number one, LPC twenty-five dash zero one nine four nine. This is an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the Pro of Manhattan Block twelve fifty-eight Lot forty, five ten Fifth Avenue, the Manufacturers Trust Company Building Individual and Interior Landmark. This is an international-style building and interior designed by Skidmore, Owings and Merrill and built in nineteen fifty-three to fifty-four. The application is to install interior signage, LED screens, partitions, any fixtures. This was last presented at the public hearing of September twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-four, and no action was taken at that time. The applicants will present revisions to the proposal in response to your comments after we open the proceedings.
Okay, and we'll do that right now. Commissioner Master, would you make a motion to open the proceedings?
So moved.
Thank you. Commissioner Chu, would you second that motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, you may begin.
Good morning, Commissioners. Cass Stachelburg Higgins, Quaysbarthen Partners, joined by Kevin Gore of KCG Architects, the principal with the firm, who is the architect of record for the project. As, let me advance to first slide. Sorry. Okay, very good. We presented this project to the Commissioners back on September twenty-fourth. The scope of work as described by Corey is associated with a new retail location for tenant GU, which will be occupying all of the first and second floors of the building. The, the, the goals of the project from, from the very beginning, they remain the same, preserving the transparency from the outside into this really significant landmark space, carrying out installations throughout the interior in a reversible manner, recognizing that this is retail use and that fixturing comes and goes. But all this has been planned with reversibility in mind. And then additional, this careful and thoughtful treatment of the two Harry Bertoya sculptures that are located on the interior of the second floor. The photograph here is taken from the corner of Forty-third Street and Fifth Avenue, looking to, back to the building, completed in nineteen fifty-four for the Manufacturers Trust Company. The exterior was designated in nineteen ninety-seven and the interior designated in two thousand and eleven. The bank exited the site in two thousand and ten, and there have been a series of retailers who have been in the first and second floors for a few years each. Joe Fresh for about four years, the North Base for about eight years. It has been a challenging location for retail use. But our, our client, who, as I said, will be taking the first and second floors, is excited about the opportunity about being in this important landmark building. This photograph straight on on Fifth Avenue, I think, also illustrates one real positive about the project. Currently, the ground floor is divided by a demising wall. So the tenant space currently, the North Base has second floor, but just here, but this space is not occupied and is, is really sort of dormant. And so the partition wall that divides those two ground floor spaces will be removed, and the ground floor will be activated once again. The proposal that we shared with the Commissioners back in September, illustrated here in this slide, was, was, there was general support for the project, but no action was taken. At the end of the discussion, Chair Carroll noted that there was indeed a lot of support for the project, and what was required were, quote, "final refinements and tweaks." And there were really three general comments that came from the discussion with the Commissioners. One was the corner sign. This is the September version. There was general agreement that the sign was appropriate, but that there was a request to, quote, "make it a little smaller." There were also requests to study lowering it in its position. The other discussion point was the transparency, particularly along the Forty-third Street side, looking into the ground floor. So again, this is a view that we shared back in September. And Chair Carroll noted that we should sort of study the shelving in order to maximize transparency, particularly on the ground floor of Forty-third Street. And then the last item was one of the, the fixtures here. One of the Commissioners noted that the mirror, which is shown here, the grand sign here in elevation, was obscuring more of the marble-clad columns than they, than he felt was appropriate. So we were asked to study that element too, which, which we have done. Finally, I just want to mention that, as, as I think you know, there were two sculptures installed originally in the second floor, sculptures by Harry Bertoya. And at the public hearing back in September, there was public testimony from Liz Wakus of Dokomomo, who had spoken with Celia Bertoya, the, the artist's daughter. And Celia had expressed concern just about the, the handling of the artwork. And so following the, the hearing, I reached out to, to Liz and Liz connected us with, with Celia Bertoya. And I wanted to reach out to her to have a conversation about art handling in particular and understand from her if there were any conservators that were preferred for the treatment of her father's artwork, and if there were any art handlers that, that she preferred. So we had a, a very engaging conversation with her. She shared with us her, the sculpture studio in, in Bloomfield, Michigan, Flanders, Flatlanders Sculpture Studio. So we're going to be in touch with them about conservation as needed, sort of evaluation and conservation of the artwork. And we've also been identifying appropriate art handlers who could, who could take care of the artwork, create it, et cetera. And we're, we're looking at a firm that works with the Met and MoMA, Whitney, and numerous galleries in the city. So I think, as I mentioned at the outset, our priority also is the proper treatment of the artwork in the space. So just turning to the existing condition, so this is a view looking west on the ground floor, sort of just off of the Fifth Avenue entry. You can see the fixturing. I'll just point out and repeat from, from September, the ground, the floor is all terrazzo that has been installed back in two thousand and ten. All the flooring and all the ceiling is circa two thousand and ten. It was all replaced, the ceiling, actually, this is the third generation of ceiling lighting across, across the first and second floor. As I mentioned back in September, the lighting, which right now is fluorescent above this sort of plastic lenses, all that will be replaced with energy-efficient LEDs, which will also allow for a much more uniform sort of field of light, as was originally intended. A photograph looking south, southeast at the second floor, across the escalator opening into the, the back corner. The cloud sculpture you can see between those two columns. Our proposal is to reposition that over the escalator. Its original intent was to be seen by people traveling on the escalator going up to the second floor. So our proposal to relocate it over the escalator preserves or restores that, that relationship between, between the escalator and the artwork. And in speaking with Ms. Bertoya, she had no objections with that. As I mentioned, the real focus of that conversation, though, was about the treatment of, of the artwork. A view looking back to the west, to the second sculpture, the screen wall and the escalator. Again, you can see the uneven lighting. All of that will be addressed through the installation of LED lighting, and then the new elements across the, the terrazzo floor and the glass railing and escalator at the center of, of the floor. So turning to comparative renderings on the left in all these next slides is what we presented back in September, and the update here on, on the right of our new revised proposal. And so in looking at the signage in particular, as I mentioned, there were two requests, one to look at the, the size of it, but also the position. It's been reduced in size by nearly two feet. And so what I think you can see in this slide is that corner column now is quite visible on Fifth Avenue. And while we have not lowered the position just by reducing it by nearly two feet, it is in fact lowered. So that allows for much more visibility, both of the ceiling in that location and, of course, through the, through the glazed corner of the building. The corner view here, similarly, you get a much greater sense of the ceiling and the clarity of that transparent, the transparency around the perimeter of the building. And then on Forty-third Street, the discussion about looking to sort of visibility at Forty-third Street at the ground floor, the fixtures have been repositioned and, and a number of them have been eliminated, such that there are views now through the fixtures, there are gaps now. Your, your, don't see that plan in just a minute. But the request to improve transparency at Forty-third Street has been, has been addressed directly. So comparable elevation renderings, you've just seen these. But again, this is what was presented in September and then the revised plan. So you can see that corner column now, it will be fully visible. And by reducing the height of the overall sign, that allows for more visibility to the ceiling and, of course, clear views directly through, through that glazed corner of the building. Similarly, at the, at the corner view, previous and, and our revised. And then on Forty-third Street, the previous proposal, where there were comments about the fixturing blocking views into, into the ground floor and the revision, revision here. And again, these fixtures are small steel tubes, about one inch in, 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 in plan. And so there, there are no backs. There are some backs to fixtures, but those are only along the perimeter of the ground floor and second floor. So there's no backs, no solid fixturing that is obscuring, obscuring long views. The second floor, really no change here, but we just wanted to update the, the visual elements at the ends of the fixtures, just to make sure it was clear. It was noted by the Commissioners that these would be illuminated. These are a Ken Do box. It's basically a fabric graphic with light behind it at the end of each of these fixtures. So again, all that signage is, is attached to the fixtures themselves and not to, not to the, to the perimeter architecture. And then a view looking back to the, to the west. And again, the fixturing, and then just a clarification on, on the illumination sort of behind those fabric graphics at the ends of the, the fixtures. Some detailed drawings, this was the previous proposal for the sign, and then the revised. There was some discussion about lowering the signage, but what we, in discussions with the staff, there's a glass parapet that runs around the second floor slab. We understand that that was really approved as part of a sort of reference to the historic planters that were there. So we thought maintaining that datum line all the way around was important. So this sign now comes down nearly two feet and is still positioned just above, above that railing. So the railing reads as a continuous element along the Fifth Avenue and Forty-third Street sides. The signage in, in elevation, the two compared to one another, as I mentioned, it's gone from about thirteen feet to eleven feet. And I think the clarity of, of that corner pier is a, a real, a real benefit in the revision. And then the Forty-third Street elevation, again, changing to, changes to the fixturing a little bit clearer here on the ground floor, where you can see the spacing between the fixtures. The plan is probably the easiest place to see that. So what we had previously presented here with fixturing running along a solid line, now it's been broken up. This fixture sits behind this black granite panel on the Forty-third Street side, where the historic night deposit box was. And then three fixtures with views through to, to the interior of the space. The previous elevation, just draw your attention to the elevation on the top, which is the view north at the ground floor, where we have the continuous line of fixtures. And then how those are broken up now to allow for views through, through and around them as well. The second floor plan, no particular changes here other than the reduction in size of the sign at the corner. And then looking at the, the last change that was requested, so this is what was presented previously. There's a specific comment from Commissioner Bland about the mirrors and the way they obscured the, the columns. These mirrors were shown as, as four feet wide with about six or eight feet off the, off the floor. And then the revision here, we've reduced the size of the, of the mirrors. So now they're only two feet wide with about a foot and a half of, of lift off the ground to the bottom. So they'll now provide clear views even at that portion of the fixture, clear views around the mirror to, to the underlying, to the underlying architecture of the building. So I think just sort of thinking back to the overall appropriateness of, of the proposal and for perhaps some of the Commissioners who weren't here in September. I think important to note is that this building has gone through a series of adaptive reuse efforts. Interestingly, the bank president for Manufacturers Trust Company, when the building was designed originally, actually charged his architect with designing a, a branch building that was, quote, "easily convertible." And the idea that at some point, this branch would not sit vacant, as, as had been the case in, in other branches that the bank president had seen in the nineteen thirties, but that it, it would allow for reuse. The fixturing, as I said, have all been designed with reversibility and transparency in mind. The signage really is quite limited to that corner sign. And we think, given the, the transparency around the perimeter of the space, it is now appropriately sized. The, the sculpture is a key piece of the interiors. Our goal is to, to enhance them and preserve them. And then, as I mentioned, reversibility is really at the heart of this, such that, as, as for any retail installation, I think reversibility is a key piece of the installation, such that there is no impact to historic fabric as part of this installation and that this, this whole, this whole installation could be removed without impacting the historic fabric of the interiors. Be happy to take any questions.
Yeah. Right. Are there any questions, Commissioners? Yes, Commissioner Lutfi?
Yes. The signage, sorry, well. So the signage is going to be turned off at night. There will be a period, we, we, the, the Community Board asked us about this back in September. And at, at night, the signage will be off. There has to be lighting on just for life safety, but the signage will be turned off in the middle of the night for sure. Yeah.
All right. Any other questions? All right. And then I just had one question on the shelves that face, at the ground floor facing Forty-third Street. They also looked in the rendering like they're lowered by a tier. Is that in addition to breaking them up? Were they also reduced in height?
They reduced the height, Kevin?
The top is the merchandise part, that explains.
Okay.
Yeah, let me, I can, I can explain this.
Okay.
I think, so the way these, these work is that this is sort of a, this is the display area. And I think that, that sort of comes and goes. So I think, which are where the products are placed will be variable. But I think we were showing that, for the most part, they'll be on the lower tier, but there may be installations where they are on the upper tier. But the fixtures are the same height as, as previously proposed.
Okay. All right. Yes, Commissioner Chu.
Yeah. What's the height of the corner? Is that a lit LED screen? Yes. From the, is that like a parasol ceiling or some, the, the ceiling element, the light?
So the, the lighting presently is sort of this combination of plastic lenses.
Yeah.
Currently. So what is the height from the top of the sign?
To, what's the clear opening dimension now that it's been reduced in size?
Let me, let me just run to that. I believe it's about three feet. And it's, it's, it's held back from the perimeter by eight and a half feet.
And so you're saying it's three feet to the ceiling element?
I believe it.
Above the purple line?
This sits.
Okay.
So maybe it's three six.
Oh, is it equal?
I believe it's not mentioned, but.
Yeah, it's not mentioned. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? Okay, so I'm just going to note for the record that we did receive a letter from the Historic Districts Council, which was shared with you all in advance of today. We also this morning received a letter from Dokomomo, which came in too late to share with you, but they did reflect on the transparency issues. And a letter from an individual which spoke to many issues, including a, a legal issue around the cloud sculpture. So I'm going to ask our General Counsel, Mark Silbermann, to address that.
Yeah, so Commissioners, you, you, you know, in the box, and I believe individually, you received communications from Theodore Grunwald about his, a lot of testimony about this application, including a reference to a lawsuit. So this, back in the early, in the middle aughts, this, when the Commission was approving changes to this initially, there was a lawsuit involving a whole variety of issues. One had to do with sculpture, the sculpture, especially the one on the back. And before, there was a, there was a settlement between the then-property owner and the petitioners that required the sculptures to stay there. LPC was not a party to that agreement, as far as I'm aware. And so Mr. Grunwald brought to our attention that this lawsuit, in, in his view, that this, the settlement agreement prohibits the cloud sculpture from being moved. We, since we don't have a copy of the settlement agreement, we're trying to get a hold of it. So if that's true, then, you know, that there's a legal agreement that says it can't be moved. And, and so it would stay where it is. If, if that's not what it says, then obviously they'll, it, it can be moved if, if that's found to be appropriate. So at this point, we, we will not be acting if the Commission chooses to move forward in any way with this application. That aspect will be, will be left on, on sort of acted on, though you can certainly feel free to comment on, on your views about it. And we will wait to see what, what the resolution is of this, of this legal agreement.
Yeah, and I think to the extent that there are comments on it, I think it would be helpful to have it on the record, even if we don't act on it. Okay, so if there are no other questions, I think we should move right to our discussion. And as the applicant stated, when we heard this application originally, I think that everyone present really thought it was very thoughtfully handled and applauded the applicant for trying to make retail work here in this very difficult location and thought that so many aspects of it were sensitively handled. And, and in fact, I think everyone understood the rationale for relocating the cloud so that it would be, have a relationship to the escalator, as was the original intent at that time. So there were no issues expressed at the hearing about that. Many stated that the ceiling, obviously, and the transparency were really critical here and really praised the applicants for the new lighting. And what wasn't discussed today is they're removing partitions behind the other Bertoya screen, which would allow more transparency through that. And I think that was very much applauded and, and everybody supported that. There, the, really, the issues that came up were the reconsidering the size of the corner sign and the solidity or density of the shelves at the ground floor on the forty, fourth, Forty-third Street side to provide more transparency. And there were a couple of comments about the mirror cladding. So the applicants have responded with their changes today. They've reduced the sign by two feet, which allows a view of the corner column and a little bit more of the ceiling. And they have reduced and/or provided breaks and gaps between the shelving on the first floor. And they've reduced the size of the mirror that would go in front of the column, so you can see the column straight through. So we'll begin our discussion. Commissioner Ginsburg, I think when we last saw this, the one issue you thought was that the corner sign could be.
And I think the improvements they've made are good, and I can support this.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Straightforward.
All right. And Commissioner Chen, I think that last time you also were really sort of applauded the applicants for trying to work on a retail situation here and really applauded removing the partition behind the screen. And I think your only thought also, and also relocating the sculpture to relate to the escalator. But I think your one thought was also about the corner sign.
And I still think that, to the extent possible, if they can work with the staff to adjust it, that would be great.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that. Say that again.
So that if they can still work with the staff on the, on the side, size.
Okay. And are you still comfortable with the rationale for relocating the cloud sculpture?
Yes, yes.
Okay. All right. Commissioner Chapin, I thought you also, I think you also thought it was well done. I thought there was a rationale for the relocation of the cloud, and your comment was also about reducing the corner sign.
Yes. I'm also pleased to hear that there have been conversations about conservation of the artwork, both, both pieces. Yeah, I feel, actually, well, obviously, there's a case to be made for keeping artwork in the original location. However, I think with the change of use and the positioning of the escalator, that the artist's original intent is much more being honored, actually, by moving it. So I'm, I'm actually, I think this is the right thing to do in this case. So I would support it if it is, you know, possible for them to do that. I think also the changes to the fixtures, the shelving, the mirrors, the reduction of the corner, all are very positive. I was most concerned about the corner and the impact that might have, the corner of LED signage. So I think the fact that it's, you know, smaller and also setback considerably from that corner addresses my concerns on that. So thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Lutfi, I think.
Some of these moves seem like very small moves, but sometimes the smallest moves ends up, thank you, having, you know, a significant and positive impact. And, you know, if you just look at the, the change in the height and the setback of the corner signage, it really, in no way diminishes the goal behind having this sign here. But what it does is very positive, as we've heard, because it opens up the views to the ceiling. And it just doesn't dominate this very, very important corner visually. So I'm really pleased to see that move. Likewise, I think that the changes in the fixtures, both in terms of height and also just opening up that one side so that there's more porosity visually, which provides a better look at the space is, is also a wonderful thing. And in terms of the, the change to the mirrors, very good. And I, I love the, I hope you're able to do it. I love the concept behind putting that sculpture of, you know, where the, where it was originally intended to be. But, and also I love it because it provides a much better opportunity to celebrate and see and celebrate this work. And I think the other changes that they're making in terms of, we'll all do that as, as well, because it's fantastic. And I agree with Diana about being happy to hear about the conservation of the art.
All right, great. Commissioner Chu, you weren't here last time. I might jump to the other two and then come back to you. Okay, Commissioner Master?
Yeah, I think that the, I think I was largely supportive the first time. But I think that the changes that they've made, the three changes, have, have improved, you know, basically the transparency and the presentation overall. And I think initially I had also said that I understood the moving of the cloud sculpture because of the relationship to the escalator, and I was supportive of that as well.
Okay, great. Thanks. And I think, actually, Commissioner Jefferson, you were not here either, right?
I wasn't here for the original presentation, but I, but I have looked at this. And I think the, it's very sophisticated. I think the reduction of the sign makes it even more sophisticated. Even if it was reduced more, it'd be, it's at the corner, it's a square, it's beautiful.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Chu.
Yeah. I think that overall retains the original design concept of open space. The reduction of the, my biggest issue, just looking at it, is the corner sign and the impact it has on transparency and openness and view of ceiling. I think the reduction in scale help. I also think that the fact that it's all essentially temporary and should not in any way damage the existing fabric of, of the space make it acceptable. I think the corner is a very tricky spot to put it, just because the corner, to me, it's a corner building and the corner, corner energy is openness. And so I hesitate when I see blockage at the corner. I do think that because it's in line with the mezzanine, it needs to be a part of that element floating away. And a bit shorter, I find it more acceptable. And a bit shorter, I find it more acceptable. I would say that backing a lot of fixtures with products right behind it, I would like to avoid. The fact that it's floating above the railing gives me a sense that it's floating. And if there's a lot of things underneath it and behind it, below it, I think that obstruction may cause it to feel a little bit blocked on the corner. Otherwise, I think the proposal to move these cloud sculptures is appropriate. I think it makes sense with the processional sequence. And the reduction of fixtures below at ground level to create porosity is, is an improvement.
Okay. All right, so I think we can go ahead and make a motion to approve everything, but we'll take no action on the relocation of the cloud sculpture until we can find the, the settlement, the legal agreement and determine next steps for that. But thank you all for your comments on it. It's very helpful as we move forward. Okay, Commissioner Ginsburg?
With regards to LPC 25-01949, 510 Fifth Avenue, Manufacturers Trust Company Building, individual and interior landmark, an international style building and interior designed by Skidmore, Owens &amp; Merrill and built in 1953-54. Application is to install interior signage, LED screens, partitions and fixtures. I note that the designation report states the Manufacturer Trust Company is plant, in planning for the new building, required that the design had to be adaptable to some other type of business, referring to the difficulty in selling or leasing traditional bank buildings when a branch closed. I further note that the building was originally designed with a prominent two-story space to accommodate a single tenant with the second floor serving as a primary commercial space. I recommend approval, finding that the proposed work will not damage or eliminate any significant historic or architectural features, that the work is sensitively designed to minimize its interaction with an impact on the significant architecture features of the designed interior, that the removal of select nonhistoric interior partitions will help return the interior closer, interior closer to the historic appearance and circumstances, that the proposed LED monitors wrapping the northeast corner of the second floor will be set above the existing nonhistoric glass railing at the edge of the mezzanine, thereby reading as a separate new installation that does not attach to the historic fabric. And the installation will only block a small percentage of the transparency into and out of the designated interior space through the glazed curtain wall facade of the building, providing for views of the luminous ceiling and columns. That the LED screens wrapping the second floor slab opening at the escalator will only be minimally visible from the exterior and will be prominently viewed from the interior only moving up or down through the opening. That the non-illuminated plaque-type signage mounted at the interior air curtain above the first floor entrance will be modestly scaled and located in a typical place for entrance signage without attaching to the historic fabric. That the additional interior signage consisting of LED logos, light boxes and lettering elsewhere within the space will be mounted on nonhistoric material, including new partitions and fixtures. That the proposed partial height fixture partitions and mirrors with limited attachment in the nonhistoric floor will not impede view of the luminous ceiling columns and will reinforce the experience of the ceiling at the continuous features of the first and second floor. The relocation of the Bertoli Cloud Ceiling Fixer will, should I just not say that? Okay, please delete that. Thank you.
All right, and Commissioner Jefferson, would you second that motion?
So second.
Mark, will you call the vote?
Commissioner Chape?
Aye.
Mr. Chen?
Aye.
Commissioner Chu?
Aye.
Commissioner Ginsburg?
Aye.
Commissioner Jefferson?
Aye.
Commissioner Lutfi?
Aye.
Commissioner Mastert?
Aye.
Eight in favor and none opposed, the motion passes.
All right, that's approved, thank you. And we'll move to our public hearing agenda.
Start with public hearing item number one, LPC 25-01648. An application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Manhattan, block 511 lot 12, 594 Broadway in the Soho Cast Iron Historic District. This is a store building designed by Buckman &amp; Dysler, built in 1897 to 98. The application is to install a flagpole.
Good morning, Board. My name is Daniel Ash. I'm an engineer with Walter Gorman Engineering. We're representing GFP Real Estate, the owners of 594 Broadway. We're before you today, looking to install a flagpole in the front of our building. It'd be approximately 27 feet above grade, very similar in size to all the adjoining properties. So I'm looking through it. This is a photo of the existing conditions right now of the building with no flagpole, Just the location of this property. Some historic, historically, they have not had flagpoles, but all the other sites now around them do, which is why we're looking to put this in. The board has recently approved some other flags at the surrounding properties. What you see here is the, the next door neighbor, the, the one that says GFP in the right, that's the proposed one. Everything else is things that the board has already approved. GFP, the owner of the building, is the real estate that's looking to put the sign up. It's just a detail of the, the pole and the flag and how it's affixed to the building with support rods. This elevation, so you could see it's about 27 feet from, from grade, which is the same height as all the adjoining flags that you have already approved. This is just a detail of the, the pole itself and how it's affixed. I think the best, all right. One of the things that we talked about with the LPC was about making sure that it was spaced appropriately to the signs that you had already approved elsewhere on the, on the building. So we're about halfway between the other two signs. That's 45 feet on one side and 40 feet on the other side. And this is just a close-up of our building as well as the adjoining properties that are not ours, where you've approved that Manja sign on the right side. So showing how all the storefronts are spaced. And our pole would go in the middle where it says "commercial and office," centered. Okay, sorry, any questions?
Thank you. Any questions? Okay, let's see if we have a public testimony. Is there anyone in the room who'd like to speak on this item? Noting that there isn't, I'll turn it over to Gregory to see if we have any remote participants.
Thank you, Chair Carroll. We do not have any remote participants with their hands raised, so I will note for the record that Manhattan Community Board Two recommends approval. And I will bring it back to you, Chair Carroll.
Okay, all right. If there are no final questions, I think we can move to our discussion. Okay. Commissioner Chape, would you make a motion to close the hearing? Thank you. Commissioner Lutfi, would you second that motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Okay. So this is a proposal for a single flagpole on the center of this building. The applicant has shown the sort of history of flagpoles that have, have been installed in this historic district, really since the earliest days when the buildings were being converted to galleries. And there are a number on Broadway. This, while he's showing proximity to other flagpoles nearby, it would be the only flagpole on this particular building as proposed. So Commissioner Mastert, would you like to start this one?
Yeah, I think it's a very modest proposal. Flagpoles are typical in this historic district for commercial stores. And, and the size of this flagpole is in keeping with other flagpoles that we've, we've previously approved. So it's appropriate.
Thank you. Commissioner Jefferson? Commissioner Ginsburg? Commissioner Chen?
Same here.
All right, does anyone have a different opinion or anything else they'd like to add? Okay, then I think we'll go ahead and make that motion. Commissioner Mastert?
In the matter of LPC-25-01648, 594 Broadway in the Soho Cast Iron Historic District, a store building designed by Buckman &amp; Dysler and built in 1897-98, application is to install a flagpole. I note that the building's style, scale, materials and details are among the features that contribute to, contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Soho Cast Iron Historic District. I further note that in recent years, the commission has approved the installation of flagpoles at 584 and 588 Broadway under a certificate of appropriateness 20-07809 and certificate of appropriateness 24-07154 respectively. I recommend approval, finding that the proposed work will not eliminate or damage any significant architectural features. That the use of flagpoles and banners for commercial advertising purposes is consistent with the commercial and industrial character of the streetscape and historic district. That the proposed flagpole will be the only one in this building and that the large scale of this commercial block and the Broadway streetscape can support the presence of an additional flagpole. That the length of the flagpole will match the previous commission-approved flagpoles on the block front and that the installation will not detract from the special historic and architectural character of the building or the historic district.
Thank you. Commissioner Jefferson, would you second that motion?
So second.
Thank you. Mark, will you call the vote?
Chair Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Chape?
Aye.
Mr. Chen?
Aye.
Commissioner Chu?
Aye.
Commissioner Ginsburg?
Aye.
Commissioner Jefferson?
Aye.
Commissioner Lutfi?
Aye.
Commissioner Mastert?
Aye.
With eight in favor and none opposed, the motion passes.
That's approved, thanks. Move to the next item.
Public hearing item number two, LPC 25-01573. An application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Manhattan, block 1305 lot 1, 325 Park Avenue, St. Bartholomew's Church and Community House, individual landmark. This is a Byzantine-style church designed by Bertram Goodhue and built in 1914 to 19, and a Byzantine-style community house with plaza designed by Mayors Murray &amp; Philip and built in 1926 to 28. The application is to install HVAC equipment.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for entertaining the project. St. Bartholomew was one of the first projects approved under the special midtown zoning, which some of you weren't here at the time, but we've been working very closely with Caroline and the staff for a number of years on a significant number of projects. Mainly, they've all been restorative. I think you know where the project is. Let me just, the, we've provided a 3D map. The, everyone knows the image of the church from the front and the community house and the plaza. The area in the back has a couple of courtyards and it's where the community house, which was designed after the church, came together. And it's not as resolved as the front of the church and the community house. And that's where the topic is today. Just a quick review, all the work that's been happening since about 2008, we have not been in front of you because it's been restorative and aiming to keep the building in first-class condition, which was the tenant of the special midtown zoning. The vestry has been scrupulous about maintaining that direction. But now we're in, faced with a, a proposed mechanical installation that marginally, it's, it's in the rear of the church in one of the detailed areas where we're going to remove the existing cooling towers, which, believe it or not, are in the basement and have caused a lot of deterioration to the building because the, probably was a misguided decision at the time. And we want to put those new ones and energy efficient and much more sustainable on the roof in these courtyards, which to a large degree are not visible from the street. Just to locate you, those are the, in the lower cellar are these units. The, they're behind the church and behind the, the main cellar. And then this, while it's somewhat confusing, the, if you look to the demolition roof plan on the left, there's a, an upper roof, which is a third floor roof and a second floor roof. We're talking about putting the HVAC unit, which is the, the deep yellow color, which would not be visible at all, except we have a need for an acoustic enclosure, which is a lot of material that will affect the visibility. I'm going to go past this to try to show, this is just an informative photograph of the, looking from the interior. This is, none of this is visible from the street, but it shows the extent of the mechanical units that are being put there, units. This is the basic unit. If you take those fins, are not part of it, but the basic box and the acoustic enclosure, that's what it, it looks like. And it'll be very carefully placed, to a large degree, not visible from the, either the right-of-way, but across the street is a publicly-owned private, a privately-owned public space in the adjacent plaza, which is 10 feet above the, above the grade. And you'll see that some pieces of it are visible. And the, we'll, we'll have a better rendering in a moment, but the, the unit will, the acoustic unit will be factory painted, not in the, on the site with a matching color and actually detailed carefully to match the existing brick, which is a great variegated kind of brick. That shows a rendering of the mechanical installation from the interior. This is not a public view, but we're going to carefully match this. And we've been successful in doing this with special paint applicators. Now, the visibility studies, I'm going to ask Andrew Kim, my associate, to, to go over. These are some of the standard units, required LPC viewpoints from the, the adjacent street, but the, which is almost non-visible from the street, but the, the pops area provides a little bit of more visibility. And that's why we're here today. Andrew, why don't you move quickly through this?
I am Andrew Kim from Atchison &amp; Doyle. I just wanted to show you the vantage points that we've taken from the sidewalk, from the plaza and, and the further back from the plaza. This is just a view up and down East 51st Street. The top photo is the church on the left and the Rudin Plaza pops on the right, looking west. And then the bottom photo is looking east. You have the pops on the left and the church on the right. These are the three vantage or sightline views we've taken from the sidewalk, the plaza, and then further back. This is from the sidewalk. We take three vantage points on the sidewalk, three feet on center apart. And we have A, B, and C. Here, you don't see the unit or the enclosure, aligning with the apps. This is vantage point B, three foot offset. Here, again, you don't see any visibility of the unit or enclosure. Vantage point C is three foot, again, offset. And here, it's blocked by the pediment of the choir. Now, we're going up to the plaza. We have three vantage points from the edge of the plaza, 15 feet apart. Again, the apps is blocking the view. Vantage point E, here you begin to see a little bit of it. And this is just a rendering of matching color to the brick. Vantage point F, here you do not, you will see a little bit here. And that's the matching color. And then the other views are further back. This is 40 feet back to the back of the app, or the back of the plaza. And then the middle point H is 20 feet midpoint of the plaza. And these are the views. One on the- One on the left is further back, forty feet, and the one on the right is midpoint. And again, the rendering is showing. That's it. Thank you.
Okay. Are there any questions on this one? Yes, Commissioner Chu.
Material of the acoustic enclosure?
It's aluminum.
Aluminum, and it's painted to match.
It's painted to match the brick. It's actually speckled to match the, and we've used Odyssey on on work on the Metropolitan Club, which has been very successful.
We try to attempt, there's three different colors on a brick, so we try to match and blend it in together.
But more importantly, I think it's factory-applied, which, because it's not just brushed on inside, it's going to be there.
Oh, and then the other question is, in terms of the equipment, maybe I missed it. The chiller is where?
The existing.
When you move the cooling tower up, the chiller usually wants to be.
It's on the basement.
Yeah, the chiller is in the basement.
So you left it separate.
And there's cooling towers. There's ten cooling towers on the roof.
Okay, yeah. So you left that down there. Okay, thank you.
All right, other questions? All right, let's see if we have any public testimony. Is there anyone in the room who'd like to speak on this item? There isn't. So I will turn it over to Gregory to see if we have any remote participants. Oh, yes, Commissioner Jefferson.
I might. If you take page twenty-three. Right. Okay, the yellow, the yellow portion that you see, and then you go to page twenty-four. Where were that yellow portion in twenty-four? On page twenty-four. Is that that wall back there on the left-hand side?
It's on the right-hand. It's being blocked by the apps.
So you can't see it in this view?
It's not visible.
It's not visible. Okay, so it's just showing you it's not visible. Okay, thanks.
And we're looking at the back wall of the community house, right?
Yes.
Okay. All right, Gregory, we'll see if we have any remote participants.
Thank you, Chair Carroll, from the Historic District Council. Michelle Arblew, I'm promoting you to panelist right now. Please unmute your line and state your name for the record. You'll have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
Hello, Michelle Arblew for the Historic District Council. HTC appreciates the sensitive placement and enclosure of this HVAC unit. We suggest the enclosure could be painted a darker color to more effectively recede into the background. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony. I do not see any additional hands raised, so I will note for the record that Manhattan Community Board Five recommends approval, and I will bring it back to you, Chair Carroll.
Okay, thank you. I think you did address the color already in the presentation.
Yes, and that still has to be, the full sample has to be approved by staff, my understanding.
Yeah, okay. All right, so the intent is to blend away with the brick wall behind it. Okay. If there are no other questions, we'll begin our discussion. Commissioner Chen, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
Sure.
Thank you. Commissioner Chapin, would you second that motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye? Any opposed? Okay, the hearing is closed, and we'll begin our discussion, and I want to thank you for outlining all of the incredible work that you've done here. And this really speaks to, I think, the importance of our individual landmarks to have the ability to transfer the development rights and to get some funds to maintain the buildings in perpetuity and in first-class condition. And I know we've worked with you for years on this one, and so many other religious properties, institutions have so much difficulty raising the funds to maintain their buildings, and especially when they're so mission-focused. So we really, I think, see the importance of that and appreciate all of the work that you've done here. So this is, as has explained, a mechanical unit at the back of, sort of in the courtyard between the church and the community house. It's not visible from the street, but it is visible from the public, privately-owned public space, the pops across the street, where you have a higher elevation, and it is seen from some views against the backdrop of the brick wall of the community house, and it's painted to blend away. So Commissioner Jefferson, would you like to start this one?
Sure. An incredibly thoughtful job, very well done. And I wrote last night that the materiality was the big issue, visually what you saw, and they handled it very well. And indeed, they added something that I noticed that the new polycarbonate roof over the igre stairs, just a nice touch, you know, so it's very well done.
Thank you. Commissioner Ginsburg?
I agree. It's very well done and appropriate.
Commissioner Chen?
Yeah, it's discreet and it's not visible. More importantly, from Park Avenue, and I think the color, the way they blended is facing to the background.
Great. Commissioner Chapin?
Yeah, I agree with the other commissioners, and also it's only visible obliquely and against the background of other similar accretions, so, and necessary, so thank you for that.
All right, Commissioner Lutti.
I want to just echo what you said, Sarah. I want to thank you for sharing all the restoration work that's been done. It's really kind of extraordinary and certainly, you know, makes us all feel very good about exactly what you said, you know, how you can use your rights to help maintain your landmark and then follow through on it. And then to back it up, I want to thank the applicant for this painstaking work, and actually your presentation, I mean, really showing us the visibility from every possible angle. So that we truly, no, it seems a little complicated, but once you took us through it, makes a lot of sense, and, you know, just the work you're doing on that one, you know, like, that is going to be there between the paint and the speckling, and it's, I feel like you're doing everything possible to do as close as you can. So thanks for that.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Chu?
Yeah, I would agree that it's a very thoughtful approach, and these jobs are never easy. As architects, a lot of us have done these type of projects, and you're, the best job you can do is to seem like you didn't do anything. And this is essentially invisible or really minimally visible, as you represented. I think it's really thoughtful, and it doesn't in any way interfere with the historic fabric of the structure adjacent. Only comment I would say is when you're looking at the color and getting the final color approved, I would recommend tending towards a darker tone, as somebody had mentioned previously, because we just don't want it to come forward, but I'm perfectly comfortable with the direction you're going in.
And Commissioner Master?
Yeah, I agree with all the other comments. This is very well done. It's appropriate.
All right, great. So I think we can make a motion to approve it.
In a matter of LPC twenty-five dash zero one five seven three, three twenty-five Park Avenue, Saint Bartholomew's Church and Community House. Application is to install HVAC equipment. I know that this individual landmark is subject to MOU stipulations requiring that the building be maintained in sound condition. I recommend approval, finding that the proposed work will not damage or eliminate any significant architectural features. The proposed mechanical enclosure won't be visible from street, will not be visible from street level, that the mechanical enclosure will be set deep within the rear yard and will only be visible from the north through the alley and at elevated location across the street towards the rear of the raised public plaza, where it would be seen against a complex background of the building's elements and rooftop accretions. And the enclosure will be painted a brick color to blend with the surrounding contact of brick walls and the performance of horses. This is only that we're achieving the landmark in sound condition, as particularly tied to the classification of loose brick. And that the proposed work will not be tracked, especially in historical and architectural areas, from the individual landmark.
Thank you. Excuse me. Commissioner Ginsburg, would you second that motion?
Second.
Mark?
Chair Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Chapin?
Aye.
Mr. Chen?
Aye.
Mr. Chu?
Aye.
Mr. Ginsburg?
Aye.
Mr. Jefferson?
Aye.
Commissioner Lutti?
Aye.
Commissioner Master?
Aye.
With eight in favor and none opposed, the motion passes.
That's approved. Thank you, and we'll move to the next item.
All right, and I'll be reading in the next two items as they will be presented together. First is public hearing item number three, LPC twenty-five dash zero three seven two five. An application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Manhattan, block seven ninety-five, lot thirty-seven, six thirty-five Avenue of the Americas in the Ladies Mile Historic District. Posen style department store building designed by William H. Hume and Son and built in nineteen hundred oh two. Application is to modify first floor infill, install a canopy signage and awnings, and establish a master plan governing the future installation of artwork behind display windows. And public hearing item number four, LPC twenty-five dash zero three seven two six. An application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Manhattan, block seven ninety-five, lot forty-four, six forty-one Avenue of the Americas in the Ladies Mile Historic District. Posen style department store building designed by William H. Hume and Son and built in nineteen hundred oh two. And this application is to modify storefront infill and install a canopy and signage.
Good morning, commissioners. My name is Jonathan Taylor. I'm with Higgins-Crazbarth Preservation Consultants. I'm here with Cindy Lawrence, who's Executive Director of the National Museum of Mathematics, or MoMath, as well as Andres Pastariza of Perkins Eastman and his team. The National Museum of Mathematics is planning its new permanent home in six forty-five, six forty-one Sixth Avenue in Ladies Mile Historic District. Sorry, do I use the errors?
Jonathan, just click on the screen.
Oh, sorry.
Use the mouse to click on the screen. Yep, there you go, and then you can advance the slides.
Thank you. Six thirty-five, six forty-one Sixth Avenue is the former Simpson Crawford and Simpson Department Store. It occupies a full block front on Sixth Avenue between Nineteenth and Twentieth Street. The museum will occupy portions of the ground floor and second floor of this very large commercial building. So we're presenting a scope including new entry and signage to identify this institution in an appropriate way. As I said, it's located on the west side of Sixth Avenue between Nineteenth and Twentieth Street. So before I get into it, I would like to introduce Cindy to just say a few words about MoMath, just because, in case people are not familiar with it, and it's a unique institution, not only in the city but in the nation.
Thank you all. My name is Cindy Lawrence. I'm the Executive Director and CEO of the National Museum of Mathematics, the nation's only museum of math. I'm also one of the founders, so I've come before this commission once before in our original location, which opened on twelve, twelve, twelve on Twenty-Sixth Street. That was an experiment. We didn't know if we built it, if anybody would come, but it's been a very successful experiment. When we left Twenty-Sixth Street, we were averaging pre-pandemic about a hundred and sixty thousand visitors a year. We have become a model for math museums in formation around the world, and New York is very lucky, I think, to have the only museum of math in the country. We are now hearing stories of children who came when we first opened, who are now professionals going off and having careers and who are inspired by this museum. We are delighted, after a very long search of several years, to have found what we think is the perfect new home, a long-term home. Our lease runs until two thousand thirty-six with an opportunity to extend for ten more years, and we are really looking forward to being a part of the fabric of this community and continuing our longtime relationship with the people of New York, people of the United States, and really the people of the world.
Thanks, Cindy. Again, the museum will occupy the currently vacant ground floor space that was previously occupied by a Lowe's. You can actually kind of see that's marked by the blue awnings of the former Lowe's, as well as part of the second floor. We can just see that in plan here. The museum entrance on Sixth Avenue near the corner of Nineteenth Street. Reusing an existing service entrance on Nineteenth Street, building exit on Sixth Avenue to the north. The storefronts of the building on the ground floor will be open to the displays, exhibits, and activities of the museum, and sort of activating the street of the building in a way that is kind of consistent with the original department store in a way. So Andres will go through the scope in detail, but I just wanted to give you an overview to orient you. It includes a new main entrance door and a modern slim-profile canopy in that second bay on Sixth Avenue you can see. That's within existing storefront infill. Signage of the ground floor, including decal signage and dimensional lettering within the very large storefront windows and transoms, blade signs and lettering, blade signs at the ground floor, lettering over the ground floor entrance, mounted in areas of plain masonry. At the second floor, a few stretch banners for identity signage, as well as utilizing the existing building flagpoles for changeable signage for temporary exhibits. A few retractable awnings along Nineteenth Street, which are mounted in nonhistoric storefronts, and some minor modification of other storefront bays where we're swapping out windows and doors. And so we think this is an appropriate, located, appropriately-located and appropriately-scaled set of signage types within the scale of this large commercial building that will allow for public identification of this institution that's going to be revitalizing the ground floor. Quickly get the existing conditions. So at the left is the corner where the entrance will be. So the brown granite frames the historic areas of storefronts. The storefront infill is replicating the historic design, but it's a recent, recently-replicated fabric. To the left, the storefronts along Nineteenth Street were not historically storefronts, but they were approved to be created in twenty thirteen and have a more modern infill. At the right, we see the central portico of the main building entry. That's today the lobby for the entry to the upper floors. The blue awning on the right, that's again a part of the Lowe's space that will be part of the museum. That's the only bay that has, we think, historic cast iron storefront framing in it, and the proposal will not impact the historic fabric there. Simpson Crawford and Simpson was a department store that had been on this block for several decades before they commissioned a new building in nineteen oh two designed by architects William Hume and Son. And because the building, the store was already operating on the site, it was built in three phases. A couple images of the original store. Department stores at the time were very immersive and experiential building type, and that's something that we think MoMath will kind of resonate with in its presence here. Canopies and other exterior entrance features were characteristic of the original store. It's a vast building with a lot of traffic, so there were numerous protected public entries all around, including a very ornate public canopy on Nineteenth Street very near the corner, as well as other exterior entrance vestibules and awnings. We can see from some of the neighbors that they, the other department stores nearby also had similar exterior entrance features like canopies, vestibules. Simpson Crawford and Simpson closed in nineteen fourteen. The designation report notes that all of the Ladies Mile Department Building, Ladies Mile Department Stores had closed and moved uptown, closed or moved uptown by the end of World War One. It was actually re-divided in ownership parcels into the three parts of the building that were built. And so that created, as the building developed after that, that sort of configuration can be read in the exterior alterations at the ground floor, including a new sort of hierarchy of entries that emerged. In the tax photo on the left, you can see that to the left of the main entrance portico, you know, one new entry to the building at six thirty-five with its marked by a pediment. And then there were still later changes to occupancy, including a naval post office, an auto showroom, Apex Technical School, that all led to further removal of the original ground floor infill. But again, the projects earlier in this century have reestablished storefronts with infill replicating the historic, as well as the establishment of the new storefronts on Nineteenth Street. So with that background, I'll let Andres present the specifics of the scope.
Thank you, commissioners. Andres Pastariza from Perkins Eastman. Walk you through briefly. So in orange are outlined the two, I guess, the areas of, that the museum would have exposure on the first and second floor on the corner, and then the small storefront that Jonathan pointed out on the right-hand side, towards the north. Some existing images of the existing condition, again, a very prominent corner with the one-three-one expression on the facade that we're hoping to, pardon me. Okay. Of course, yes, pardon me. So a view of the proposed facade, we are.
We are essentially, we wanted to, to, within this large building, have a, have an expression or have a presence, then really bring an identity for the museum. We were having, we're having a two-story expression, and so in order to do that, as Jonathan explained, we're bringing some of the signage, both the banners along the storefront, which we have reduced, I think, since the previous presentation to the community board. And those would really state the presence of the museum and get the civic identity of this public institution. And then the banners themselves, we would be using more as, since those are easier to take down as a rotating, rotating exhibits, rotating programming that could be updated over time. The, one of the, one of the things that we like about the proposals, really, you know, in the Ladies Mile District, really bringing that window shopping and that connection between the inside and the outside eyes on the street, and then sort of bringing all that activity. The storefronts will be very open, or the space inside will be very open. So from the street, you're actually be able to see very deep into the museum in order to kind of getting into the, into the exhibits and interaction between the crowds inside and outside, and then seeing that activity on the second floor as well. The awnings here, you see on the, along Nineteenth Street, we'll see it show a little bit more detail on them on the upcoming slides. And then this is another view on, along, on the loading dock, which we're reconfiguring, adding essentially, removing some doors along the perimeter, just to have it for operational use for the museum to kind of control, control the entry, entry and egress of that. And then I mean, another view on Sixth Avenue from the north side, where we'll be removing some of these awnings and actually exposing more of that net historic storefront and some of the other ones that have been recreated, but exposing some more of that and having more, a more open facade and storefront again to get those views into the, into the museum. At the entrance, we have a precise, elegant intervention, replacing the awning with something that just marks the entrance to the museum within, again, within this large building, trying to create its own identity. You'll see throughout some of the, some of the additional signage that we're proposing. But the main canopy itself would have, would have, we're proposing an inlay that would be on the underside of the canopy, bringing some of the pattern and some of the texture that the museum features within its, within its collection. So that's something that we would work with, with the museum and develop on the art for. In terms of locations, again, we'll see some of the, we mentioned the awnings along, along the Nineteenth Street facade, and then some of the storefronts, the entrances that we're removing, so really to make the main entry at Sixth Avenue the prominent location. These slides just show a little bit more detail on each of these interventions. And so again, on the, on the main entrance, and throughout, we're really working within, not just within the masonry, the existing masonry, but also within the, doing infill within the existing storefronts. And so we're trying to keep the vertical and transom mullions and working any intervention within, within that, within those boundaries. And so here, you also see the proposed signage at the freeze. So again, within that, that flat, flat masonry, you'll see more detail on that in an upcoming slide. The canopy itself is, again, a precise intervention that just comes in right below, right below that transom. So we're retaining, retaining that and keeping it a very, very contextual and elegant addition to the, to the facade and mark of the entrance. The signage itself, again, above the freeze, where the plan is to introduce anchor points at the, at the joints and this freeze in order to get a little bit more depth. These would be in cast bronze letters that would be floating off of the facade a little bit. And so we're minimizing the connections at the, at these joints. Just to give it that, again, give it that sort of prominent entrance at the, or prominent signage at the entrance. At the corner, we're proposing a, essentially, you know, a rotating art master plan, where we would have at the, just at the corner location below the transom, a rotating series of exhibits that would, that we're proposing some parameters there at the bottom, but really keeping it contained and eighteen inches back from the glass. This is an example of what that could be, but again, this would be, there would be different, different proposals throughout that would, that would vary over time. This is, this is a proposal of having fins in mirrored glass that would be kind of a kinetic sculpture as folks are walking by, getting reflections and views in at the same time. And so the idea is that it would be still transparent and allow some of these views that we're trying to capitalize on from the street. The vestibule itself, we're replacing this existing vestibule, which is very opaque, and really kind of blocked that, blocked views from, from the street into the, into the space and opening it up so it's a much more glass and an open, transparent views into the, into the lobby, which is also the museum store, and then through deeper into the museum. So here you see on the bottom, on the bottom right, the circle being that inlay that we're proposing within the, within the canopy. And while the, while the ceiling of the canopy is opaque, the, you know, the views, the vertical walls for the most part are transparent. And then a few quick views of the other, the other bays that were intervening, existing conditions, and then again, opening up, removing the, the existing awnings and opening up that up. On the left-hand side, there's an existing wood door that we would be repurposing. In this case, it would be just for egress, and so we're just trying to rehabilitate that and refinish that to match the upkeep, or I guess the, the condition of the, of the other doors that are part of the portico. And again, opening up the views into the, into the gallery on the, on the Sixth Avenue storefront. Along Nineteenth Street, really are just introducing a few awnings at the, at the bays. As Jonathan mentioned, these are, these are some recent additions of the storefront that were, had some, mimicking some of the historic detail, but in a modern, in a modern style. So these are really just adding some attractable awnings that would be attached to the transom only, and so we're staying away from, from the masonry and just making the connections at those horizontal transoms. At the, at the loading bay, again, removing some of the, one of these doors and replicating the limestone sill, so the material and texture of that, of that, that existing fabric would be, would be matching. And then one of the last details is some of these transom attachments, or sorry, banner attachments and blade attachments. So on the left-hand side, there are some existing anchor points that we're looking to reuse for the, for the blade signs on the, on the lower level. And then on the right-hand side, these are some of the attachment details for the, for the more, the second floor banners, which again, would be at the, at the joints and keeping, keeping some minimal, essentially minimum attachment at those locations on the, on the upper level. And then a series of, these are a series of the decals that would be applied to the storefront glazing. It shows the dimensional sign at the corner as well with the MoMath logo, but the rest are some of the, some of the graphics that would be, that are part of the museum branding as well.
All right, I just want to add a little bit of context. In terms of approval history in the district, there are some other examples here of canopies in the Ladies Mile District that have been approved on Sixth Avenue. I think these are all relatively old examples, but I think our sort of slender proposal will be a nice addition to the, to the building and the district. And then regarding banners, first I want to note on the left, nineteen ninety-five, which I realize is quite a long time ago, the commission did approve a series of banners across the ground floor storefronts on six forty-one Sixth Avenue. I don't believe these were ever installed, but at the time, the commission found those appropriate. And otherwise, you know, banners are a traditional form of signage for cultural institutions open to the public that the commission has approved in a number of cases where museums are adapting a historic building for a museum occupancy. So I'll just leave you with this last overall view and let us know if you have any questions.
All right, thank you. Do we have questions, Commissioners? Yes, Commissioner Lutfi.
Two floors, or parts, parts of the ground and parts of both floors.
Thirty-four thousand, and then you said there's a good deal, is there office space in here too? In the zone? And then, so the ground floor and the second floor, is it primarily exhibitions, I'm assuming? And then your retail space is just in the front? So when you talk about the visibility from the street level, are you just looking at retail space? Are you also looking at exhibitions? And does that exhibition space? I'm just trying to get a sense of it.
Yeah, no, no, the questions are fine. We just want them to answer at the microphone so that the Zoom people can hear.
And the exhibition space, is that permanent exhibition space, or does it rotate?
It's mostly permanent exhibition space on the ground floor. And so along here on the plan, you'll see the corner, so the first bay and a half, more or less, is the retail and lobby space, and then the rest of the bays are exhibit, exhibit space. And so those are mostly permanent exhibit space on the ground floor. On the second floor, on the corner, you have some, some permanent exhibit space, and then towards the back, there, well, actually, a lot of, everything that's on, along the storefront will be mostly, mostly permanent. I mean, some of those things will, will move, but it will be mostly permanent exhibit space.
And then, okay, so in terms of rotating exhibitions, how often does that happen? I'm just, I'm just trying to understand how the, how it's going to function.
So there's a gallery space that does not have exposure to the street, and that changes maybe every three, four months, six months, like most museums have changing exhibitions. The signage that we're showing in our initial display shows the work of M.C. Escher, and we're very much hoping early in our time to have the first exhibit ever of the math of M.C. Escher. So that's the kind of thing that would be on those flagpoles to announce, now it's Escher, now it's some other artist, now it's some other exhibit. But those, the things you see from the street would be our permanent exhibits.
Okay, Commissioner Chu.
A couple of questions, one for, I guess, us. Is there a master plan for signage and graphics on the building as a whole?
There's not currently a master plan.
Okay. Is that something that we think should be implementing?
So...
Many tenants, and there could be different signatures.
That is true, and what I would say is that, you know, we would review each of those individually. We can't really compel an owner to do a master plan. And the one thing I would say about the master plan is, the way we should think about it is actually an administrative permitting tool. So once we, what it does is, it actually benefits the owner. So the owner submits all of the materials, the drawings, the details, so that we can approve prototypes for repetitive elements on a building, like a storefront. And then that means that in the subsequent applications, they don't need to submit all of the material, and they just need to submit a statement saying that they're...
Or there's a holistic approach to the building.
Right, but that's actually not the reason we developed this master plan permitting tool. It's really to allow for a more efficient approval process once there's a prototype approved. And so, so it's really, it's a tool, and it's not something we can compel an owner to do.
The other question I have for the applicant is just, I didn't quite hear the interventions into the historic storefront, we're keeping fabric and then inserting within those elements? That's what I thought I was hearing.
Yeah, so none of the... Let me go back to an overall view. All of the storefront infill within the masonry on Nineteenth Street and the part of Sixth Avenue, the southern part where the entrance is, all of the infill there is nonhistoric. In other words, within the brownstone, that, that infill is replicated based on historic design, but it's recently installed. And so, and on Nineteenth Street, the rest of them are a sort of a modern design, and they're also new, but they're also not even the same ornament as the historic. They're kind of a, a modern take on that. I could show you a detail. But then on six forty-one to the north of the portico, sorry, so, this last bay on the right, that's the one bay that I think the cast iron infill is historic. And so the proposal there is only to remove the nonhistoric doors that are there within the cast iron and replace it with a show window and a bulkhead. So again, none of the historic material will be impacted.
Is there a consistency in their intervention around all the other areas that you're intervening in then? Because you're saying that the fabric is different slightly in each one of these bays.
Yeah, well, I think there's, there're basically two different regimes. There's the historic storefronts on Sixth Avenue and returning one bay on the corner. And so there's only really one intervention there, and that's the one you see here on the right.
Okay.
And then on Sixth Avenue, all of these are sort of modern, modern storefronts. And so they are consistent, because most of them are just, they're all just getting an awning. And then the one at the left is a, sorry, am I doing? I'm overdoing it? Okay, I'm sorry about that. The one at the left is an existing loading bay, just getting some modifications, including, but the bulkhead, doors are being removed and the bulkhead and window installed to be consistent with the rest of the Sixth Avenue storefronts, I mean, sorry, Nineteenth Street storefronts. So yes, for each type, everything is consistent with what's there.
And you're just really changing storefront infill at three bays, is that right?
Right.
Yeah, the loading bay, which will be replaced with windows to match the others on that elevation. The new door here.
Right, and so that's within, sort of, just within that one sort of quadrant. And so everything within that quadrant is going to be new. It's going to be a new canopy, a new door framing. And, but the window to the right is just staying as it is.
And the transom is...
And the next phase, your space.
And it's not our space, right? So it has doors, and that's also part of the reason, by the way, for the signage at this location, including the blade sign to the right of the entrance, is just the fact that there's another set of doors, right, adjacent in this sort of three-bay area. So it's just, we want to be able to distinguish where is our entrance.
And your entry is only that pair of doors, and there's an emergency exit on the right side of the main center vestibule that you need to retain?
Yes, and that's, that's actually part of the vestibule, and we're just retaining and refinishing those wood doors.
Right, on the left.
On the left, yeah, like this.
All right, and then this final one on the right hand, this is, is six thirty-five?
This is on Sixth Forty-one, yeah, this is north.
It's to keep the historic storefront in frame and just replace the doors with windows.
A new bulkhead at the bottom, because there's doors there now. But basically, it's the mullion and the transom and transom bar are the, presumably the historic, because you can see them in the tax photo and later designation photo.
So replacing the doors with a window and then doing a bulkhead below.
And the bulkhead will match the, all the other ones of Sixth Avenue.
Okay, great. Commissioner Master, and then Commissioner Jefferson.
Yeah, can you talk a little bit about the banners that you have attached on the second floor? And talk a little bit about how you would be attaching them and perhaps not hurting the masonry?
Sure. I'll start, and maybe Andres can also speak, but the banners are, at the second floor are attached at, well, first of all, the purpose of the banners, the stretch banners you see here, is sort of, even though they're changeable, I think they would be more long-term, static identification signage, part of the sort of demarcation of the museum and this building and in the district. And so they are, I think, first kind of modestly scaled, I would say, for these, on these piers. And they are, would be attached at masonry joints, as shown, sort of, not super well shown in the section, but as shown in the elevation. And that's... They're attached through masonry joints.
Yeah, so yeah, epoxy anchors through the, through the masonry, or just at the masonry joint. So minimal, trying to keep minimal intervention at those, just at those locations.
Right, well, if you will hear in the, I think, community board resolution, you know, we previously had no access, the tenant did not, the museum didn't have access to the flagpoles from the landlords, so we had more banners. And we prevailed in getting access to the flagpoles, which I think is a great thing, because it allows for a reduction in the amount of banners from what we originally were proposing, and also allows, I think, for this kind of, you know, to, the flagpoles are more easily changed, so it does allow for that programmatic changing of the flags for, for exhibits, while still having a certain amount of presence at the second floor of the banners.
All right, Commissioner Jefferson.
I was looking at your facade and was trying to understand the concept of your signage system. So you have four different signage systems. You have the canopy sign, you have the glass sign, you have the banner sign, and you have the canvas veil and sign. So you have four types of signage. So you have four types of signage on this facade, correct? Am I reading it right?
There's, there's the canopy which has lettering. There's lettering in the sign band over the cornice of the storefront. There's some detailed signage in the windows, dimensional lettering at the two transoms and blade signs and the banner signs. So maybe that's more than four, but. But I think they speak, you know, they speak to the variety of purposes, both for people walking by directly on the street, people approaching from farther away, people trying to find this museum in this very much larger building.
I understand, I understand the signage. I was just trying to understand how they were placed on the second floor. They were placed in bays, but they weren't defining entrances. They weren't doing any kind of architectural work. They were just placed, right? They were just, and I was trying to figure out what your thoughts were. The signage should define an entrance perhaps, or whether it's just signage.
Partly, I mean, I think we were, we were placing them around, working around the existing flagpoles and then trying to establish a rhythm that would, that would work around, essentially framing the corner and framing, framing the entrance in some way. So just maintaining, maintaining that rhythm and working with the existing fabric.
I was looking at the big banner ones there too. And I thought, gee, it'd be great to have him over the entrance, this defined entrance as you walk up the block. But it doesn't do that, right? Just a question, I guess, just a thought.
I think that one, one of the, one of the flags on the flagpole will also, I mean, the flagpole exists, but it will be at the, at the main entrance, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions? Yes, Commissioner Chen.
Just to follow Commissioner Chu's question and the word about consistency and the purpose. In looking at the old photographs and looking at the, especially on 19th Street on the second floor, if you go back to the, so I don't get a sense that there's a consistency on the second floor for the blade signs and the, and the, you know, and, and I'm trying to understand what is the purpose of these blade signs that are you targeting in terms of purpose? I mean, first of all, I'm very excited, the fact that you're doing this national museum. And I'm wondering whether this is the appropriate technique to serve the purpose of the audience that you're trying to reach on alert.
Just to be clear, you're speaking about these like stretch banners that are on the piers of the second floor?
We get a tremendous number of tourists coming from all over the world and having something that you can see when you're coming down the street as people are trying to find it. It's a lovely grand building and we're trying to fit into the fabric of the building. But at the same time, for wayfinding purposes, we want people to be able to, coming down the street, say, oh, there it is. That's, that's where we're going.
So being that I'm wearing my eyeglasses and I have trouble sometimes with the sun glare, looking at something that big, were there any other alternate method that we'll consider? With a, with an awning, with a sign band on the, behind a glass or anything considered? In case that visibility is not that great.
I mean, I guess we say that we, we've tried, part of Commissioner Jefferson's question, I mean, was, was having a variety of signs, right? Until we, so we have some on the glass, we have some on the awnings. The awnings were limited to what we can, we can have, right, on the, on the balance, right? And so we were just trying to have, have a few, a few different signage options for, for different approaches, right? People coming down 19th Street, people coming up Sixth Avenue. So this was, this was one that serves that purpose. And I think there will be, there will be also some signage along the, along the pedestrian scale essentially at the storefront level on the glazing and other things. And so there will be, there will be that variety of that.
Yeah, I just want to add that one of the main approaches, I think, to this place for visitors will be from the 199 station on 19th Street and Seventh Avenue. And so people coming from the West, I think it's just an important wayfinding to have some signage on the 19th Street side. And just in terms of historic photographs, I'd also point out, and also as subject to transportation, another interesting thing that is in the tax photo on the left that didn't, does not blown up. But if you see at the very left, there's an extremely large sign for a PATH train station that used to be entered through this building. So I just think it sort of shows how wayfinding to this building has been a part of its history as well.
All right, thank you. Other questions? All right, we'll move to public testimony. We may have more questions after that. Is there anyone in the room would like to speak on this item? Noting that there isn't, I'll turn it over to Gregory to see if we have any remote participants.
Thank you, Chair Carroll. We have a few remote participants with their hands raised. The first we'll be hearing from is David Haloka from Manhattan Community Board Four. David Haloka, I have promoted you to panelist. And once you are a panelist, please unmute your line and state your name for the record. You'll have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
Hello, I am David Haloka, speaking on behalf of Manhattan Community Board Four. CB4 supports the proposed storefront and awning modifications and signage, with the exception of the proposed surface mounted banner and second floor cornice signs. These would permanently damage granite and limestone historic fabric, even if attachments are located at masonry joints, as is evident from loss of stone where this was done in the past. The masonry's elegant one quarter inch joints simply do not lend themselves to this approach. The signage would not respect the principle of reversibility as its future removal would leave permanent scars on the building's refined limestone and granite surfaces, a special concern for a landmark protected structure that may stand for centuries to come. We may support appropriate surface mounted signage only with attachments into replacement stone or filler where original stone has already been removed or patched. We do not support any new anchorages into stone. We would not object to prominent signage incorporated into the front of the new entrance canopy in place of the second floor cornice signage now proposed above it, which requires damage to stonework. We recommended to the applicant reuse of two existing facade flagpoles in place of the proposed banner signs, and we're told that the building owner would not allow it. As noted today, an accommodation has since been reached and today's presentation shows the flagpoles in use. Again, CB4 recommended using them in place of blade signs, not in addition to them. We encourage the applicant and LPC to work toward a signage solution in the spirit of the commission's guidelines for signage that can be approved by staff. We note that the building has particularly fine mosaic tile thresholds just outside original building entrances. These feature a thistle motif symbolic of Scotland, a nod to the nationality of the Simpson Crawford and Simpson Department Stores founders, as well as that of their artists Hume and Son. These mosaics are miraculous survivors of 122 years of foot traffic and deserve protection and restoration. We ask the commission to ensure that they are protected during execution of the proposed work and any other construction of the building. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony. Next up, we'll be hearing from Pamela Wolf from Save Chelsea. Pamela Wolf, I'm promoting you to panelist right now. Please unmute your line and state your name for the record. You'll have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
Hello. This is Pam, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Very good, can you see me?
Yes, we can see you.
Amazing, thank you. I am Pamela Wolf, I am the president of Save Chelsea and I'm speaking on behalf of the group. Save Chelsea proposes this application's proposal to invasively anchor signage to granite and limestone facades at 635-41 Sixth Avenue, the former Simpson Crawford and Simpson Department Store in the Ladies Mile Historic District. Even proposed attachments at existing masonry joints, which are only one quarter inch wide, would certainly damage adjacent stone. Such irreversible damage is evident on the building's facades from the previous attachments centered on joints, as clearly seen in a photograph we have sent the commission. The proposed reuse of isolated previous anchor holds that have been patched only invites further damage. The building's restrained and elegant style depends heavily on its flush fields of granite and limestone, which remain largely and blessedly unblemished. If successive tenancies leave permanent marks, this effect will be degraded in the long run, a critical consideration for a protected structure. We agree with Community Board Four in finding the rest of the proposal acceptable and in recommending study of an alternative solution to facade anchored signage that is in line with LPC's signage guidelines. We also join CB4, as David Haloka has just discussed, in asking for special protection of the excellent broad mosaic tile thresholds just outside the original building entrance and just to the right of it on the smaller door, which feature a thistle motif, which is a symbol of Scotland, reflecting the heritage of the original owners and their architect. I'd like to expand on that. I was there yesterday and there is a major sidewalk replacement project underway across the whole northern half of the Sixth Avenue side of the building. The, the mosaics are completely abandoned, it appears. They're unprotected, they are, they have not historically been maintained. The ones that must originally have been to the south, at the south entrance are gone. That's lost. But the one at the main entrance, which is beautiful and subtle and gorgeous, needs protection, it needs restoration, it needs maintenance. The smaller one at the door, which is the emergency exit for the museum, is completely ignored and, and is, is in danger of something happening bad from the sidewalk installation. The one at the main entrance is utilized. People come and go through that entrance. It's, it's been enclosed to some extent, but it is not at all protected and it clearly has not been maintained. That's my plea. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Pamela, for your testimony. Next up, we'll be hearing from Christina Conroy from the Victorian Society in New York. Christina Conroy, I've promoted you to panelist. Please unmute your line and state your name for the record. You'll have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Christina Conroy for the Victorian Society in New York. Now, the Victorian Society finds that most of the changes being proposed are appropriate. However, we question details of some of the proposed doors and we believe the proposed signage is excessive. The new doors at the south entrance closest to 19th Street are modestly detailed, but we see on board 37 that they are taller than the other doors on this facade. There doesn't seem to be any specific reason to make them taller. We urge the applicant to align them with the other Sixth Avenue, the others on the Sixth Avenue facade. Now, the proposed canopy over the south entrance is modestly scaled for a building of this size and won't draw undue attention to itself. It appears to be easily reversible and we advise approval, but the signage must be reduced. The signage installation details should be modified. Now, we counted the signs being proposed. The drawings show four signs at the display windows on 19th Street, five signs on the awnings on 19th Street, two signs in the transom of the corner windows, three signs on the canopy, two flags, three blade signs attached to the store columns on the ground floor, five vertical banners at the stone columns at the second floor, and a long track mounted sign made up of individual metal letters centered on the main entrance to the museum, for a total of 25 signs. Now, we'll note these signs are being proposed at a building whose large display windows allow great views of the interior of the museum. The signs mounted on the display windows and the transoms on the sides of the modern canopy won't do any damage to historic fabric. However, the blade signs and vertical banners will all be attached to historic stone. Doing so even in the joints and even in some existing holes will be reused, always causing some damage to the adjacent stone. Now, there are no blade signs or vertical banners visible in any of the historic photos. We urge elimination of the blade signs and banners, both to reduce damage to the stone and to bring the amount of signage to a more appropriate level. Now, finally, we find the long track mounted sign above the main entrance to be very sympathetic in scale of design, but we note that there, that it's to be secured to the masonry joint in eight locations. Now, we believe that using a large metal track at the bottom where it's concealed by the historic stone cornice would allow reducing the number of connections into the facade and we urge this change. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you so much for your testimony. Next up, we'll be hearing from Michelle Arbelu from the Historic Districts Council. Michelle Arbelu, I am promoting you to panelist. And once you are a panelist, please unmute your line and state your name for the record. You'll have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
Hello, Michelle Arbelu for the Historic Districts Council. HGC applauds this applicant's reinvigoration of the important corner and finds most details of this proposal appropriate. However, we find the five pin mounted banners at the second floor excessive and unnecessary, given the multi-bay, ground floor signage and second floor flags. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony. I do not see any additional attendees with their hands raised, so I will bring it back to you, Chair Carroll.
I thank you. Would you like to respond to the comments?
Yes, I'd like to make a few responses. With regard to objections to mounting signs at the joints of masonry or existing patches, I think this was expressed in conjunction with a plea to approve signage conforming to LPC guidelines. But I would say that I think attaching signs, sign attachments at plain masonry and masonry joints is exactly what the rules allow staff to approve and the commission routinely approves for signage for establishments. And perpendicular signage, I think, is just very important for this particular project. With regard to the signage, the lettering in the cornice or sign band over the storefront, I think one person talked about preferring to attach it at the, there's a sort of a ledge that this is above. We thought about an attachment that would be on that instead of in the face. However, we feel that like a sky facing attachment would be more vulnerable to water infiltration and damage to the masonry. We also thought about an adhesive sign, but that would, you know, wouldn't allow us to use real bronze letters. And, you know, adhesive would have the possibility of staining the masonry as well. I think, just to speak to the threshold of the wooden doors at the right of the portico, I mean, I can't speak to the, directly to the current sidewalk proposal. Our only work at that area is to refurbish the wood doors. Of course, in our project, all precautions will be taken for that existing mosaic. With regard to the taller doors at the entrance, which are taller than the existing nonhistoric storefront doors elsewhere on the building, you know, again, I think this is part of marking a, the public entrance of this major institution as to be a major part of the building. It's going to be a high traffic entrance. And so, you know, I think it's, there's a reason, I think, for it to be a little bit more prominent in size and not necessarily match the sort of short size of the nonhistoric storefront doors. Thanks.
Thank you. So the, at the threshold, at the base of the doors, I think at the, they were saying at the main entry door, which is not part of this tenant's control. And at the door, the door to the right of the main entrance door, there is a mosaic tile, which the applicant has said they will make every effort to protect it while they replace the door with the window. And I think, you know, we can also, I understand there's a sidewalk permit possibly if sidewalk work is going on, so we can investigate the larger sidewalk issue.
And most of that mosaic is, you know, outside of our leasing area, but we'll certainly communicate with landlord any concerns about the mosaics in general, not just in ours.
Okay. Yes. Okay, any other final questions, Commissioners? Okay, let's move to close the hearing. Commissioner Ginsburg, would you make a motion to close the hearing? Thank you. Commissioner Chen, would you second that motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so the hearing is closed and we'll begin our discussion. And so there are a number of components to this application. One are, as we've discussed earlier, modifying. One are, as we've discussed earlier, modifying three storefront bays to. One is a loading bay to create a storefront to match the other storefronts on that side. Then on Sixth Avenue, there are two storefront bays where the historic inflement will remain, but in one quadrant. Either a window or in the other case, nonhistoric doors will be removed and replaced with window and doors. And, um, and then there is the canopy at the entrance. And then there are awnings on the side street. And then there are signs, dimensional signs and decals in the windows, blade signs, stretch banners and. And then I, the, the hanging the flags from the existing banner poles. And so as the applicant said, some of those types of signs may be eligible for staff level review, some would not. But we're really also looking at the cumulative effect of the signage. And so we'll begin our discussion. Commissioner Latifah, would you like to start this one?
You were gonna say that. First of all, I would like to say how excited I am. About this museum coming to this particular location in. In, in, uh, in the landscape of Manhattan. This, i- i- it's interesting because it's part of Sixth Avenue is actually already very active. And continues to get more active. There's a lot of retail here. There's a lot of residential above. Different kinds of retail and. You're so fortunate because you already have a lot of the tra- traffic. Just by the way that people live and work in this neighborhood. So you are not in a very isolated space. Location where I think you're, you know, you have to drive people to in a, in a. You know, very difficult, I'm gonna say sometimes desperate way, you know, sort of like the Children's Museum in Brooklyn. You know, it's very isolated. So how wonderful is that? And your mission is fantastic. It's incredible that you've already have had a lot of visitorship. And that you have had an impact on the lives of children. So, thank you. I also think you, uh, this is a great building. Incredible ground floor. Do you have something else that, that, that a lot of museums don't have here? That you're taking advantage of in a very. Positive way overall, which is you have windows. If you think of museum spaces in our city. You know, many of which are in older buildings, even if they're modern. MoMA, look at the, look at the space that C-Mom is going into. Goons, uh, uh, and I could just name every, the Met, you know, the, I can name them all. They have very, very little storefrontage. You have retail storefrontage. And you are doing an excellent job of using that frontage from a programming perspective. To, uh, sort of, uh, to. I'm gonna say advertise in the best way. What it is that you're doing on the inside. And whether these are going to be permanent or at some point rotating exhibitions, but it sounds like they're going to be permanent. Which is one reason I asked about this. They're gonna be here all the time. People are always going to be walking by. Peering in, because I have no doubt that what you're gonna put there is going to be visually. Interesting. It's going to draw people there in. The colors are going to be fantastic. So you have so many things going for you, which I. I'm so, I'm very like excited about for you. I also think you have a fantastic logo. It is colorful, it's evocative of like. Of, uh, you know, sort of, it's like exciting. It kind of makes math steam. You know, it's sort of re, I don't want to say repositions, but it helps to further your theme. Of like how, you know, interesting and attractive this is, math is and, and playful. So I think all of this is incredible. And, but I do think that when I look at this. And I think about all of those things that I mentioned. They just have too much signage and it's just not necessary. Given where you are. That you're at an open ground floor space, that you're using it to the max. In terms of, you know. Broadcasting who you are in a very positive way. This is, you know, um, this is not a retail space. And it's, um, it's not a retail space. And when we look at what major museums in this city are doing. There, the amount of signage they have is somewhat modest. And as I said, I, I don't really think you need it because you're already maximizing in so, so many ways. So I'm just gonna point out a couple of things that. And then I think need, should be paid attention to. So on the front, you know, your entryway, it's true, you have a lot of things that call out. What the name of your museum is. You have, you know, the, the new. Metal, uh, sign band, which I sort of like, whether or not it should be applied in this way. Because I think it kind of. In the sort of historical, more traditional sense of museums, it's like a little slightly more formal. Uh, sign band and I, I like the idea of having it. And then you have just under it, the big MoMath logo in two bays. Just fantastic. But I don't think you need at the bottom. By the corner and to the right of the entryway, yet two more signs. That say MoMath and I'm not sure that you need. You need the sign around, uh, your canopy. It's just too much to me. Now, I do think a banner is a great idea. And, um, and it is definitely something that all museums use. I think the question for you with this is from a signage standpoint. You can, you're sort of having this banner do. Things for you. It not only calls out. That, you know, the museum in a slightly bigger way, which all, all museums do. But then you also at the bottom of it. Showcased your special exhibitions. I'm, I'm not so sure you want the special exhibitions. Depending upon how you want to use it, I, I think that might be in fact, a different banner. So, but I definitely could accept it in this way. I'm, and I'm just, just gonna continue on the signage for a, a little longer. So if you move to the side of the building. I. You, you're fortunate to have canopies. They're very lovely and elegant. I don't believe you need signage on every single one of them. Again, this is not a retail store. Um, and I definitely don't think you need the very small banners at the top. On the second level, although I would be fine with a larger banner on the side street. That calls attention to the fact that there's, that the museum is here or that there might be a special exhibition. So I think that works well. And then. I, I think it was suggested that. I think you're doing things to separate yourself from your adjacent neighbors. So, um, in thinking about the comment that. It would be nice if the door levels can all be at the same height. I'm, I'm not sure why you wouldn't do that. And maybe it's because you want to line it up. With the height of the windows. I could actually, I'm, I'm, I actually could be okay with the door height, to be honest. And I do think in terms of incursions. Into the fabric of the building, that it would be very, very important to protect the building, minimize them. And local to what's that.
Okay, thank you.
This is the greatest project.
Great. And one other element that I neglected to mention earlier that we need to discuss is the master plan for the artwork. That will be behind the display windows. So the, there are the sort of the glass fins, right, Corey?
It's one display window of the corner. Where they would periodically change it out and they don't have. Designs for each of those, but, uh, in ideally, they would be at least somewhat, have some visual transparency. But, um, on a rotating basis, one display only, uh, window only, the one we're looking at here at the corner.
And if. No, that's just a representation of, for what it could be. Okay. All right, Commissioner Chu.
Yeah, I want to echo my fellow commissioners. Excitement about your institution being here. I think that it's really nice to have cultural, uh, programming as well as retail mixed together and residential. I think that's a great plan and this is a great magnet in this neighborhood. I think your institution is wonderful and I think that your general approach, which is towards transparency. And celebrating activity and content is what I'm really excited about. And so to that context, I feel like, unlike a lot of the retail which wants to screen advertising. Cause they're selling some product. You're selling what you are as institution and the engagement you provide for a, a lot of mostly young people, I think that are visiting. But maybe you get all, all ages. So to that point. I feel like, um, in some ways that the quantity and diversity of collage of, of signage. In some ways diminishes your, your, your importance in, in a bigger level. I feel like it, maybe, I don't want to be the, I don't want to say this in a negative way. I feel like it almost cheapen, uh, cheapens your brand, which I think is an amazing brand. In, in this wonderful historic building. And I would like to find a way that you can make your, your institution and your brand and identity stronger. And I think that that, because of the variety, it, it, it loses its powerful message to me. You do have a logo, which I believe is that symbol between the Mo and the Math. I'm thinking about, again, we talked a little bit about consistency because you have a lot of real estate and it's hard to locate where you are. Because traditionally, a building like this may have six tenants and each one is screaming at each storefront. I feel like you have an opportunity that is beyond that, but it still feels sporadic. And to that, what I think is, so we would go through all the elements. On the second floor, I am concerned about those, uh, the, the banners damaging the, the, um. The glazed Masonry up there. And I do question, um, how effective they are because I think the flagpoles are great. And the flagpoles give a lot of visibility on both streets. Therefore, I, I'm questioning the, the banner on the second floor. At the grade level, I like the, the, the more classy, formal lettering on the cornice. However, I do, I would like you to work with staff on minimal penetrations. And there's different approaches and that can be discussed. Below that, I like your minimal, modern canopy. I, I think it's very clean. It has nice shadow and depth for being a very minimal, uh, insertion. And again, and expresses transparency, which I think is wonderful here. If anything, what you have consistently is transparency on these storefronts, which I think is a great asset. And you've got a big room because you want to show off all that activity in that big space and that's a great moment. I don't have big issue with the, the elements on the glasses. I think they're also temporary and they, they could change. I like your exhibits in the window because I think that's what it should, you should have exhibit. You should have changing activities. Um, and I think that that will be a case by case in terms of obstruction. It seems like your intent is always transparency and so I didn't have an issue because I knew that that was your concept. The other elements downstairs are down at the grade level. I'm, I question the graphic on the side of the canopy because it's so small. And whether it's a really effective, I think it's a bit, a lot of things for the eye. And I'd rather look into the space than be confused on the facade. The blade signs, again, I questioned them. They seem. I don't know, they just seem like small elements on such a prominent facade. And, and I don't know how effective they are and there, and there's nowhere like that on the building. So I, I question those down there. The awnings, I think, are perfectly acceptable and I don't have an issue with the graphic at the end of the awning either. There's a consistency there. What I would just say, and this is something for you to think about. Is you have a lot of real estate wrapping around. And I wondered if there was an elegant, minimal way of putting your logo in the upper transom. Maybe just on one per bay, just to repeat it around this, your real estate. That graphically tells me how expansive you are down there and, and, and your presence down there. Yeah, I think I've covered. The door height I'm okay with. I do think, um, as we said, most of these buildings have different storefronts. And yours is more welcoming. Fine with that.
Thank you. Commissioner Master.
Yeah, this is a very exciting project. Um, I would have loved to have taken my kids here. They are adults now, but I think I am your prime demographic. So, um, it's very exciting. Um, let me go through, um, you know, uh, each element. One, I think the storefront bays, the infill, I think everything that you've done is perfectly appropriate. The number two is the marquee, the canopy. I think it's very simple. It doesn't overwhelm. It's appropriate. Three, the awnings are very modest, um, and in keeping with what we would expect here. Four, I'm gonna say the window displays, I think they're set back enough. And of course, as a museum, you need to have a rotating, uh, window display, so perfectly appropriate. Five, the banner and the flagpoles. I can understand why you would need, um, the flagpoles. You know, it's important for people to try and find where you are. And also to tell people that you are first floor and second floor as well. The only thing I wonder about is the blade signs. You know, I think Stephen made a very good point that it almost distracts from all the other things that you have done. So perhaps. You know, that's the one thing that I might say doesn't belong. And then, of course, the attachments of the, the blade signs, you know, is something that we have to be very cognizant of. Let's see, I think blade signs planner, I think I've covered all the, oh, all the elements here. But I, overall, I think it's very exciting. And I would say, since you do have, I think, thirty-two thousand square feet and you are on the first and second floor. I think we do have to, um, allow you to have enough signage. Um, and given that there are a lot of people coming to you as a destination, perhaps from all over the world. It's important for you to have the, a wayfaring signage, um, and to make sure that people can find you pretty easily.
Thank you. Commissioner Jefferson.
Yeah, I think it's a. Great program. And what, what. Let me see, where, where do I start? I start with the, um, with the corner. I think the corner signage works very, very well. I think the infill works and the corner signage works. I think the entrance is too small. I mean, the corner, proportion of the corner to the end. I mean, the corner, proportion of the corner to the entrance and the canopy is reduced. And I would imagine if they increased the size of the canopy to, to, you know, turn a corner, where do I enter? The canopy could become this kind of another way of bringing the inside out. And the the awnings, the awnings, you know, can serve a purpose, not just awnings. It could bring the inside out. This math notion of mathematics and the study of it could be graphics on the outside. It doesn't have to be blue. It could have intricate patterns of mathematical things. It could, it could reinforce when you walk down the street, you know that this awning is not just an awning, nineteenth century awning, but says something about the interior and, and be activate, you know, the inside out. I think the, the flagpole banners, if they relocated to kind of define something at the entry, they're fine. They're, they're required because you, as you walk down the block, you need to know. And, and the, how it's attached could be worked out by staff. The only other thing is the, what's it, awning? And that's about it. I think I've covered it all.
Thank you, Commissioner Ginsburg.
So first, repeating what I think everyone else has said, this is great, and it's wonderful to have you here. And in general, I, I, you know, the openness and the visibility in is also really good. And my, the one signage that doesn't seem to work for me at all, and those, well, I guess they're, they're, call them banner, but they're sort of like blade signs on the second floor. But banner. Right, uh, they seem like to be unreadable from the street. To break up the, the thing, the flags on the second floor will be fine, and their existing flagpoles and that will be big enough to be read. And then on the ground floor, I basically, you know, think as is is fine. I think every other's comment that the entrance may be a little hard to read is valid, but that I, I don't have a problem with what you have now. So I would just say, just getting rid of those banners on the second floor, and I can find this appropriate.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Chen.
Yeah, I'm something like the echo chamber. I'm in agreement with almost all the comments. Kudos to the, to the saying, I still want to take this moment to thank my, my Brazilian math teachers, multiple of them, and it was a life transforming experience. They, what they taught me was beyond math and including respecting deadlines. So they gave me a tough deadline to meet, and it says, you remember this. Respect deadlines, and so I do remember that. So they, Brazil has a fantastic method to teach mathematics to the kids, like me at the time. So kudos to what you're doing, and I, I think you're almost there. I think this is a crazy, I think what is lacking is a prominent indicator. And I almost wish that you would do the old design on the corner. One of the old photograph where you will wrap this corner with that announcement that says, I'm here. I'm, I'm a, a major attraction. I'm a major, is a place worth visiting and exploring. I think that that's something for, you have good architects here. Puck and Eastman is a great team. So I, I agree that I think the, the damage to the granite upstairs, that would be something should be conscious about because the, it's hard to patch the granite. And I'm not sure whether it does the purpose that it does, that, or the blade sign will do what you. So I, I, that's the only concern in the area. I, I do think you, you could do better in terms of announcing your presence.
Thank you, Commissioner Chapin.
I obviously also agree that it's terrific to see this kind of, this museum, you know, soon to come to life, and I'll look forward to visiting it when it is available. I do think that first, the master plan for the rotating display is fine. The storefront bay modification, also the doors, doors, the canopy, and the awnings and the signage on the awnings. There is, there is a sense of signage clutter here. And, you know, Commissioner Chu's remarks about trying to like focus on having a real statement of the larger signage is, is relevant. But, you know, I can pretty much approve it as presented. The problem I have is similar to other commissioners with the small banners on the second floor, which really add to the clutter and do not, and are, you know, potentially a problem in terms of installation. So I wouldn't like to see those. I think that the flagpole signage is fine. The adhesive signage also on the transoms, I think, is important. And I think a couple of other commissioners suggested maybe, but, or I certainly was thinking, if you don't have the signage on the second floor, maybe you could just use, you know, repeat the large signage on the second floor corner. And they had, and they had, use the adhesives, which would be very prominent and wouldn't cause any damage to fabric. So that would be my suggestion. So I think that's, and the blade signs, you know, I guess they could be approved at staff level, or at least two of them. So, you know, it's, I don't think they're, they're not a major issue for me, so I could approve those.
Okay. All right, thank you all for your thoughtful comments, and thank you for a very thoughtful presentation. And I think that there's, as you've heard, a lot of excitement about the Museum of Math coming here. I actually was here at the commission when you originally came to us for your first location, and I remember that being very exciting as well. And you had a very bold sign at the front that everybody embraced at the time. And so really looking forward to your success here in this new location. And I think that we've heard a lot of support for most of the work that you're doing here in terms of the storefront and the entrances and even the canopy, but that there is some concern about the amount of signage, the sort of the quantity and the diversity, as Commissioner Chu said. And I think some people have made suggestions, particularly focused on either the stretch banners or the blade signs, but I think you might want to think about it and think about sort of how to sort of create a unified identity here. And maybe think about reducing signs, but also, you know, sort of tying them together in a way that gives you identity for wayfinding as well as for, you know, pedestrians and for your exhibits. So we will take no action, and we'll let you just sort of think about the comments and think about how you'd want to address that and come back to us when you're ready. All right, thank you. All right, we'll move to the next item.
The next item is public hearing item number five. LPC twenty-four dash one-one-two-six-nine, an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Manhattan, block twelve-twelve, lot fifty-one. One forty-four West eighty-second Street in the Upper West Side, Central Park West Historic District. This is a neo-grec style rowhouse designed by Ralph S. Townsend, built in eighteen-eighty-five, and the application is to construct a rear yard addition.
Commissioners, I'm John Gillis. I'm the architect for this proposed addition to the rear of a house on West eighty-second Street. This is the location in the district on the west side. The, we show here the, the back of the house and the various photographs around the rear of the house, along with the plan of the, the entire block showing the house in the middle of the block and yeah. This is a series of photographs around the, the entire donut from this house, just giving you an idea of what is all around. This photograph, this drawing shows you basically what we're aiming to do in this proposal, which is to extend a, to make a larger bedroom over a, an existing terrace at the third floor, which is what's visible in, in the three D view on the right. It's intended to be a simple structure more in keeping with what exists in these interior courtyard, so to speak, of the donuts to not be copying some of the more Rococo elements that already exist at the lower level of this house. I want to show you, and here's the section of this extension, which has a glass roof and glass wall, as you saw in the previous drawing. And these are, these are just the drawings of the interior work being done. But I wanted to get to the, the third floor itself. This shows the three plans of the existing, the demolition and the proposed on the right. And there's, on the left-hand side, there's a large-scale drawing of this extension of the existing bedroom to make it a larger bedroom. These are just further details of this extension and the, actually, some of the other details which are down below where we're changing a, a door, a set of doors at the base of the building. There are some other instances of similar structures that the commission has accepted in the past. Here's one example. And another version, much more elaborate than what we're doing. And that is, that's the basic idea.
All right, thank you. So commissioners, just to, for clarity, the proposed changes to the windows on the existing commission-approved rear addition at the bottom floor, and I think the second floor, are eligible for staff level review. So we are only looking at the additional floor on top of the rear yard addition. And so we, just as you listen to the testimony, that's for you all to hear. And if it wasn't clear, the existing addition is a commission-approved addition. All right, are there any questions? All right, let's see if there's any testimony. Anyone in the room would like to speak on this item? No, so I'll turn it over to Gregory to see if we have any other participants.
Thank you, Chair Carol. We have a few remote participants with their hands raised. The first we'll be hearing from is Megan Fitzpatrick from Landmark West. Megan Fitzpatrick, I've promoted you to panelist. Please unmute your line and state your name for the record. You'll have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
Hello, Commissioners. Megan Fitzpatrick, speaking on behalf of Landmark West. The Landmark West Certificate of Appropriateness Committee finds this proposed rear yard addition on top of an existing rooftop addition inappropriate. To the best of our knowledge, there is no precedent for these types of greenhouse additions above the garden level on the Upper West Side, or within the Upper West Side, Central Park West Historic District. Approval would make this proposal inconsistent with the built fabric of the district. Although, although the rear was altered beyond original condition, and this proposed is not, and this proposal is not visible from the streets, these compounding incremental changes to the donut are worth further consideration. Additionally, the proposal will partially block the windows on the neighboring building, further limiting light and air in these dense residential blocks beyond constrictions imposed in their two thousand and one expansion. Although not within the purview of this commission, it is our committee's considered opinion that such construction further dilutes any argument for appropriateness because of its impact on the quality of life of neighbors. Our committee recommends the commission reject this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony. Next up, we'll be hearing from Christina Conroy from the Victorian Society of New York. Christina Conroy, I have promoted you to panelist. Please unmute your line and state your name for the record. You'll have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm Christina Conroy for the Victorian Society of New York. Now, we do not remind the removal of the elaborately detailed windows at the second floor rear, but we could reach this conclusion only after learning through our own research that they're not very old. The presentation didn't include any contextual information regarding the age or significance of these windows or even a decent picture. In our opinion, such information should be in the presentation materials so that the commissioners and the public can properly evaluate the proposed changes. Thankfully, we were able to find the information ourselves, but it would have been helpful to have had it in the presentation as these details should not be left up to chance or interpretation. We must comment on the inappropriate addition of the unimaginable anodized aluminum greenhouse, which removes one of the only remaining floors of the historic fabric. The applicant should look for a better design solution that does not involve creating an entirely new opening at the loss of so much nineteenth-century brick. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you so much for your testimony. Next up, we'll be hearing from Michelle Arbelu from the Historic District's Council. Michelle Arbelu, you've been promoted to panelist. Please unmute your line and state your name for the record. You have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
Hello, Michelle Arbelu for the Historic District's Council. HGC finds the third floor rear addition to be completely inappropriate added mass and objects to the replacement of the second floor windows, which I understand is not longer part of this. We ask the commission to deny this application. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony. I do not see any additional hands raised. So I will note for the record that Manhattan Community Board Seven recommends approval with the suggestion to use bird-proof glass. And with that, I'll bring it back to you, Chair Carol.
All right, thank you. Would you like to respond to some of the comments we've heard? Okay, so I think if you could just speak a little bit, why don't you come back up? So this is an existing addition. You're proposing an additional floor. I think you said in the beginning that this end of the block is primarily large apartment buildings, and you have a large apartment building to your one side and directly behind you, right?
Correct.
And then I think to your other side, you have a full-height rear yard addition on another rowhouse, correct?
You mean, are you talking about on the right side?
Yes.
Yes, right, that, that building actually comes out beyond our building. Goes higher than our building, but
Right, so there's a full
As the drawing shows, there's about a three-foot extension of our new extension beyond their face of their building.
Okay, all right, and then the brick walls are to be, the sides are to be brick walls?
No, they're, they're intended to be stucco to match the, the color. See, on the rightmost photograph, that's the building adjacent to the new extension, and it has kind of a beige, gray, stucco all around it. And that's what we're planning to use to make it in the same vein as what's there.
What is existing wall below it?
The existing wall below which?
The addition on top.
Brick.
So you're going from existing brick side alley facade to stucco just off of it?
Correct, right.
All right, any other final questions, Commissioners? All right, let's move to our discussion then. Commissioner Chu, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
Yes, I moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Lutfee. Would you second that motion? All in favor, say aye. Aye? Any opposed? Okay, so the hearing is closed. And as I've said before, this is a proposal to proposal to add another floor on top of a commission-approved addition. So this is not visible from a public way and it is surrounded on three sides by larger buildings. It has, it's at an end of the block. It has apartment buildings directly behind it and next to it. And then the other row house to its other side has a full-height rear addition. So as we look at the height and depth, we, you know, we do consider that context. And it does seem that, that the height sort of fits within that context and it maintains the top floor, which is the top floor that we, that, which is the floor that we usually try to maintain to preserve a sense of scale and the original volume. And then with respect to the design, the windows on the lower floors, as I said, are eligible for staff-level approval. It's a modern addition. And, you know, we have, tend to be flexible in non-visible additions, usually with thinking about design choices that retain the scale and character of a row house. So that will give you some guidance for that. So Commissioner Chapin, would you like to start this one?
I feel like, you know, we, we do allow a lot of latitude with rear additions and this is not visible from anywhere. And it also is and tucked between two large buildings. And I think it's very simple. You know, it's the simple kind of greenhouse, you know, on the top here. To me, it actually is acceptable because I just feel like it's fairly minimalist and it's, as I said, between two large buildings. So it's I don't, I, and, and the top floor is being preserved. So I, I could approve it as presented.
Thank you. Commissioner Lutfee?
Yeah, I happen to agree. I think it's pretty simple and the changes are fairly minimal.
All right. Commissioner Chu?
Yes, I think that this is the kind of application that we have approved in the past. I'm, I'm actually questioning why it's, it's not a staff level.
It's because the rule, if there is an existing addition and there is a proposal for a new addition, the staff can't approve it. The commission needs to look at the cumulative effect. So thank you for asking that question. So we need to look at whether the size of it overwhelms the building.
Okay, I, my only comment is, I, I think this is appropriate. My, my comments that I'd like the applicant to work with staff on is really if that is, if stucco is the right material. My issue or the thing that I'm trying to be sensitive to is although the addition is an approved addition and it's not historic, I believe that additions to existing structures should try to work with them. And a part of this accretion feeling like just putting a box on top is completely new language of every kind in its material choices and design decision. I don't, I know you don't see it from anywhere, but I think it should work with the structure below it in some way. And I would say that the glass should set back and not sit on the edge of the parapet, but be pushed inward so that it has a sense of the glass plane of, of also masonry and glass, which is typically set back.
Thanks. Commissioner Master?
I agree with the previous comments. This is appropriate.
Commissioner Jefferson?
With my fellow commissioners, I think a little more articulation would be great.
Okay. Commissioner Ginsburg?
I agree. I agree particularly with Commissioner, Commissioner Chu's comments.
Commissioner Chen?
Same here.
Okay. All right. So I think that we'll do, make a motion to approve it with the modification that they work with the staff on the finish of the sidewalls and setting the glass back off of the parapet.
Great. Thank you.
Thanks.
In the matter of a certificate of appropriateness Borough of Manhattan, LPC 2411269, 144 West 82nd Street, Upper West Side, Central Park West Historic District, a neo-greek style row house designed by Ralph S. Townsend and built in 1885. Application is construct a rear yard addition. I know that the building's style, scale, materials and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Upper West Side, Central Park West Historic District. I recommend approval, finding that the existing rear addition is not historic and the third floor at the rear facade has been altered to accommodate the previously approved addition. Therefore, the proposed work will not damage or eliminate any significant historic fabric, that the proposed work will not be visible from any public thoroughfares, that this row house is located between a row house with a full height, full-width rear addition and a large apartment building within a block comprised mostly of large apartment buildings and that the cumulative effect of the proposed greenhouse addition combined with a previously approved rear addition will not overwhelm the facade or the central green space, that the design and materiality of the proposed greenhouse addition featuring glass and metal framing and mullions flanked by masonry parapet extensions, that the sidewalls will be consistent with greenhouse additions occasionally found in this historic district, which are compatible with rear facades and extensions due to their light neutral presence and that the proposed work will not detract from the special architectural and historic character of the building and Upper West Side, Central Park West Historic District. And that the applicant will work with his staff on the finish of the sidewalls and also on the, setting the glass back off the parapet.
Thank you. All right. Commissioner Chu, would you second that motion?
I can.
Mark, may you call the vote?
Chair Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Chapin?
Aye.
Mr. Chen?
Aye.
Mr. Chu?
Aye.
Mr. Ginsburg?
Aye.
Mr. Jefferson?
Aye.
Mr. Lutfee?
Aye.
Mr. Master?
Aye.
With eight in favor, none opposed, the motion passes.
All right. So that's approved with those modifications. Please continue to work with the staff. We'll move to the next item.
Next item is public hearing item number six, LPC 24-07463. An application for a certificate of appropriateness in the Borough of Brooklyn, Block 244, Lot 17, 177 Montague Street, AKA 134 to 138 Pierpont Street, the Brooklyn Trust Company Building Individual and Interior Landmark. This is an Italian high Renaissance-style built building designed by York &amp; Sawyer, built 1913-16. The application is to replace windows.
Hello?
Hello?
I'm Stanley Wong. I'm the architect. This is a York &amp; Sawyer building from 1913, 1916, the years it was, it was built in Brooklyn Heights. And we are looking to, there's been some water leakage, air leakage and other damage on these seven large arch windows along Clinton Street. And we're looking to repair and replace parts of the windows. There are some tax photographs and the previous designation photograph. It's known as the Chemical Bank Building. It's now a Chase Bank. And this is the Clinton Street facade and highlighted in orange are the seven large, all identical large steel and glass windows. So this is typical of all of them. You'll see built-up mullions in the H pattern in the center and then larger frames around it, which make up one part of the window. The other part of the window are these very delicate diaphanous kind of lights in between as an infill. What we, what you can't see and what's really well concealed is that there are actually two or two pairs of operable windows there. And I have to back up. I have to say this is both an interior and exterior landmark. So on the left, this is a view from the interior, looks much like the exterior, except there are these swing arms for the operating mechanism, which nobody actually knew how it operates. And they haven't been opened in, in anybody's memory. Here's a plan view of existing. So you can see on the right, on the left has a swing arm, but it was taken at a different section. But on the right is the swing arm that pivots on a vertical rod and somehow pushes the window open. And you can see the large, deeper mullions are the actual fabric that we're going to keep of the windows. Oops. So we, we did manage to get some of the windows open and you can see they aren't casement windows as you would expect, but they are actually awning windows, push-out awning windows. And on the lower right, you can see there's this worm gear that presumably you put a crank handle on there and rotate these windows open. So just going over some of the existing conditions. The exterior looks fairly in good shape. Some of the bottoms of the major mullions are bowing out a little bit on the built-up steel plate. Those will be removed, rusted, corrected and repainted. Here's an example of where the, the, the lights that we're looking to replace have gotten damaged. Those swing arms, I guess you can put enough torque on them that you can actually bend the, the lights. And the lights are all screwed in. They're made up with a, a profile, a steel profile with little tiny angle frames screwed in on the inside. Maybe hard to see here, but a lot of rust and condensation over the years had made these frame stops bend out of shape and also a lot have been just gone missing. There are a lot of cracked glass areas. And on the right, in lieu of the frame stops, the repair typically was just to caulk it and sometimes caulk it with, you know, different colors. On the left are just some areas of condensation and, and paint peeling. And this is a close-up of a horizontal light and you can see the, the frames are actually bowing from the rust jacking. We've done a, a kind of a visual graphic of each window. I'm just going to show you the one. This just shows the various conditions of them. Red being the worst, blue, I believe, is the glass is cracked. And orange shows some other areas that need repair. And all of them have about the same amount of, of damage. So our proposed detail is to use Hope's Windows and ironically, Hope's Windows was in business a year before this building was built. So they've been around for a long time. So again, as I said, we're going to keep the major mullions, just repair them and, and, and get them in good shape again and just replace all the little rectangular lights on the interior. What that does is we actually get a slight increase in visible glass just because of the way the conditions meet the mullions. And we also propose to keep the swing arms there, but reattach them in a manner to the glass, but obviously they're not going to be operable. These will all be fixed lights. And so on the left, you can see the existing. On the right, you can see the proposed where we have, it's a little bit thicker because it's insulated glass. We want to get that thermal performance in there. And also the, the, as fixed glass, there won't be any air infiltration issues that, that we have. And this is a close-up of, on the top left is the existing condition, bottom left is the proposed with the one-inch glazing. And then on the right are section details. This is kind of taken at where the operable window is, but you can see we're trying to use a similar profile, steel profile, contemporary steel profile from Hope's with the insulated glazing. And that's, that's what we're proposing.
Thank you. Any questions? All right. No questions at this time. And there is no one in the hearing room to speak, so I will turn it over to Gregory to see if we have any remote participants.
Thank you, Chair Carroll. I saw for a moment Judy Stanton, you had raised your hand. If you could please click the raise hand button again, so I know that you're still here. Judy Stanton, could you please click the raise hand button if you would like to speak on this item? Okay, so I will be promoting you to panelist right now. And once your panelists, please unmute your line and state your name for the record. You'll have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
Good, good afternoon. Judy Stanton, speaking for the Brooklyn Heights Association. The Brooklyn Heights Association Landmarks Committee has reviewed this, carefully reviewed this proposal for the Brooklyn Trust Company Building Individual Landmark at 177 Montague Street. And we support this application. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony. And I do not see any additional hands raised, so I will note that Brooklyn Community Board Two recommends approval. And with that, I'll bring it back to you, Chair Carroll.
Thank you. So it's supportive testimony. Is there any other final comment you'd like to make before we move to our discussion? All right. Great. Thank you. All right. So we'll close the hearing and have our discussion. Commissioner Chapin, would you make a motion to close the hearing? Thank you. Commissioner Chen, would you second that motion?
So both.
All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right. So we'll begin our discussion about the replacement of the windows on this individual and interior landmark. Commissioner Chu, would you like to start this one?
Sure. Really great presentation, I have to say. You, you, you have one detail and you've given us the whole story. And we get entire buildings with the same amount of content. So I have zero questions here. And I also understand the challenges you're dealing with because it's a steel system and it's going to stay a steel system. You will improve the insulation because it's IGUs. This is the, the best way to create the minimal approach. And I'm aware of that. And you've got a company that does the best steel windows. So completely appropriate. Thank you.
All right. Commissioner Master?
Yeah, I agree with Stephen's comments. It's appropriate.
Commissioner Jefferson? Commissioner Chen?
Totally in agreement. Just, I was just thinking about last night watching Da Vinci and there was a comment about that his genius was the ability to convey in one drawing the essence of what that is about emotion. I hope you get to watch part two tonight. I cannot because I have other but it is just, but it's so appropriate. I'm delighted to see this landmark building get its proper treatment and it's well done.
Thank you. Commissioner Chapin?
Yeah, this is very important for the preservation of this building. And I think that the perceptual difference in the, you know, minor change in proportion will, will not be an issue. So I agree with the other commissioners.
All right. Great. And Commissioner Lutfee?
Yeah, this is a very important building on a very important block in the middle of the heights. And I agree with my fellow commissioners. You know, it's a job well done, very thorough.
Great. Thank you. Okay. So I think we're all in agreement. Commissioner Chu, would you make the motion?
Sure. In the case of LPC 2407463, 177 Montague Street, also known as 134, 1 to 138 Pierpont Street, Brooklyn Trust Company Building, individual and, individual and interior landmark. The application is to replace the windows. And note that there is a facade easement held by the New York's Landmarks Conservancy. But I recommend approval, finding that the major vertical mullions of the historic monumental arch steel windows at the Clinton Street facade will be retained and the replacement of corroded steel window elements is warranted by their deteriorated condition, that the proposed steel windows will match the historic windows in terms of configuration, material details, profiles, dimensions and finish, that the change in operation from operable awning windows to fixed at the, at the four light windows will not be perceptible from the street and that the work will not diminish the special architectural or historic character of the individual landmark or designated interior space.
Thank you. Commissioner Master, would you second that motion?
Second.
All right.
Chair Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Chapin?
Aye.
Mr. Chen?
Aye.
Mr. Chu?
Aye.
Mr. Ginsburg?
He stepped out.
Commissioner Jefferson?
Aye.
Commissioner Lutfee?
Aye.
Commissioner Master?
Aye.
Seven in favor and unopposed, the motion passes.
Group, thank you very much. All right. We'll move to the next item.
Next item is public hearing item number seven, LPC 25-00808. An application for a certificate of appropriateness in the Borough of Brooklyn, Block 215, Lot 7501, 37 Cranberry Street in the Brooklyn Heights Historic District. This is a federal-style row house built in 1829 and the application is to construct a rooftop bulkhead and install railings.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Lacey Williams, Preservation Staff. The item before you is for 37 Cranberry Street located on the northwest corner of Cranberry Street and Hick Street in the Brooklyn Heights Historic District. The proposal is to construct a rooftop stair bulkhead and railings. These photos show the existing condition. These photos show the existing condition with the mockup visible in the photo on the right. And here are the existing and proposed elevations. As well as the proposed section showing how the bulkhead has been recessed below the roof level in order to minimize visibility as much as possible. And here are some, sorry. Here are some commission approved visible bulkheads located nearby within the historic district. And the proposed bulkhead will be viewed within the context of these other existing adjacent rooftop accretions. And here you can see the visibility looking west along Cranberry Street. And the proposed materials are a gray painted cement board cladding with gray standing seam metal roofing and gray metal railings. The applicants are here to explain a little more about the reason for installation.
Right.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Rufus Summerby, a designer at RA Summerby. We were hired to do this project at 37 Cranberry Street largely because the client wants to have access to their rooftop, which they currently cannot get to very easily due to the ladder in the common stairwell. So the bulkhead would allow them access to a deck that we'd be providing there. But there's also additional concern over fire safety as this is a wood framed building with a restaurant in the first floor, so there's a heightened fire possibility.
All right. Okay, any questions, commissioners? Okay, and I'll note that there's no one in the hearing room, so I'll turn it to Gregory to see if we have any remote participants.
Thank you, Chair Carol. We have one remote participant with their hand raised, that being Judy Stanton from the Brooklyn Heights Association. Judy Stanton, I have promoted you to panelist. Please unmute your line and state your name for the record. You'll have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
Judy Stanton, speaking for the Brooklyn Heights Association. We reviewed this proposal for 37 Cranberry Street and we support the application. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony. I do not see any additional hands raised, so I will note for the record that Brooklyn Community Board 2 recommends approval. And with that, I'll bring it back to you, Chair Carol.
Thank you. So you have supportive testimony. Is there any other final statement you'd like to make before we move to our discussion? Okay. All right, great. Okay, so let's close the hearing and do that. Commissioner Jefferson, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Thank you. Commissioner Master, would you second that motion?
Second.
All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, so the hearing is closed and this is a fairly simple application for a rooftop bulkhead that is set back, but does have some view. And what you see is the metal cladding and the applicant has shown that there are other roof, you know, bulkheads and other utilitarian rooftop accretions found within the roofscape in this district, some approved by this commission. So we'll begin our discussion. Commissioner Chen, would you like to start this one?
Yeah, I think as you just stated, I can find this appropriate because given the context and the setback.
Commissioner Chapin?
I think this is perfectly appropriate and, you know, a typical rooftop accretion we would approve, so I approve it as presented.
Commissioner Lutfee?
Appropriate.
Commissioner Chu?
Appropriate.
Commissioner Master?
Appropriate.
Appropriate.
Okay, great. We all are in agreement. Commissioner Chen, would you make the motion?
In the matter, LPC 25-00808, 37 Cranberry Street, Brooklyn Heights Historic District, the application is construct a rooftop bulkhead and install railings. I noting the building's style, scale, materials and details among the features that contribute to the special architectural historic character of the Brooklyn Heights Historic District, I recommend approval, finding that the proposed work will not damage or, or eliminate any significant architectural features, that the simple massing or gray finish of the bulkhead featuring cement board, cladding and standing seam metal roofing, and the gray finished metal railings will be typical of utilitarian rooftop accretions found at buildings of this type and age in this historic district, that the proposed rooftop bulkhead and railings will only be seen at the distance looking west along Cranberry Street and will be in keeping with rooftop bulkheads found on buildings of, of this type throughout the historic district, that the proposed work will not detract from the special architectural and historic character of the building or the historic district.
Thank you. Commissioner Chapin, would you second that motion?
Second.
Thank you. Mark, will you call the vote?
Chair Carol?
Aye.
Mr. Chapin?
Aye.
Mr. Chen?
Aye.
Mr. Chu?
Aye.
Mr. Ginsburg? Mr. Jefferson?
Aye.
Lutfee?
Aye.
Commissioner Master?
Aye.
With seven in favor and none opposed, the motion passes.
That's approved. Thank you. All right, so that concludes our morning session. We're going to break for lunch right now and we will resume at 1:15. And we will ask all members of participating, all members of the public participating on Zoom to voluntarily exit the meeting at this time so that you don't have technical difficulties should you wish to return and we've had to remove you. So we'll ask everybody to exit and we will see everybody at 1:15. Thanks.